We will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. Do we have anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
None tonight, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, in which case, we will adjourn the special meeting and we will convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Kozlowski.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
And Hal.
Here. If you guys will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any updates to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There is one additional information transmittal for item number 23 on tonight's agenda. A copy has previously been provided to you. It is also available on the table in the back.
That moves us to business from the floor, and I see one request to speak. If there's anybody else that would like to speak to us on anything that's not on the agenda, if you want to pick up a blue card in the back of the room and bring it down to the officer up front.
The first request to speak is from Jason Davis.
Good evening, and first of all, thank you, all the city council members that have actually called me back. We've all had some good discussions the last few weeks. I totally appreciate it. I want to talk about some issues that I personally have witnessed on our streets in regards to how our unhoused are being handled. There was an officer that was helping out an individual. He was actually an excellent officer, and that individual was being given information that wasn't correct. I engaged in that conversation. That had to do with where this person could actually be, where this person could go. The officer had said, "Let me get in my car. I can take you to Bidwell Studios," and I came to clarify what Bidwell Studio was, which is not a place where, it is not a shelter. After talking to this gentleman, it was very clear that he is not being trained appropriately, and he had told me that. Yesterday, I was out asking lots of questions in our town, and I had an individual who works for the city, who is, was very clear that he will stand there, and if he sees somebody that's unhoused and they leave their stuff behind, that he takes it, he puts it into his truck, and he dumps it in the dumpster. And I can talk to you all individually. I'm totally available. You all have my phone number, and I can talk to you in greater details on that, and I have a recording of it. I've also talked to Rapid Transit employee yesterday, and this Rapid Transit employee, I said, "I've noticed that it seems that there is not as many unhoused individuals." And they, she, I said, "Have you been witnessing anything?" She said, "Well, some of my staff have been talking a lot about that the Folsom Police Department will actually take individuals to the Sunrise Light Rail and will just, will have them get on Light Rail," and that doesn't seem very appropriate. The navigator phone number is still not correct. There's been multiple messages left on that navigator's phone number. The navigator hasn't been here in quite a while, and there are no return calls happening. You guys, I totally believe this starts, this starts, this starts from the top. You know, if, if police officers are not being trained consistently and there's not continuity, I don't, I don't know how that works. In many of our businesses, that wouldn't be acceptable. But I've had multiple police officers tell me that they are not, they are not being trained. And I, that shocks me. I asked this one particular officer if he has a street sheet, if he has any information that can be given, that they can read from, and that officer said, "No, there are street sheets that many of these organizations have," and it's, it's really unfortunate. I also heard a city council member, when Hart was giving a presentation, say that if there are individuals that are not from the city of Folsom, that they should not, they should not get, be going to our, our winter shelter. And I don't understand. It is everybody's right to come to this town. I came here because I wanted to come to this town. I'm not from this town. Probably many people in this room are not from this town. So if that's the kind of things we're going to be doing, it's totally inappropriate, and I think we should be looking more at the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And I've asked a lot of questions, and I'm not getting straight answers as far as what is the city's stance on the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals? I, and I've already shared this in the past, so I don't know how much time I have, but I think this all starts at the top, you know? The chief and I just had a conversation, and it's very difficult for me to have a conversation. And I think it starts at that level.
Jason, I'm going to need you to wrap.
That's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, your next speaker this evening will be Jim Harville. Jim will be followed by Dick Brabrick, or Rick Brabrick.
Good evening, Mayor Hal, city council members. Jim Harville, President Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad. Just wanted to give you a quick update. We are making progress in the MOU with the developers and the city and the railroad in terms of allocating the funding and the prioritization of the signals south of Highway 50. Unfortunately, the timing is such that it's forcing us to take an additional step prior to our Rail Fest at the end of September. We do have the steam locomotive coming back into town. It has been on loan out to the Skunk Train on the coast, and they're, they're just loving that, having that out there. We don't want them to love it too much, though. We want it back here in Folsom. So I, what I wanted to do, what we're working with, with staff at this point, is a intermediate step where the city helps in providing additional protection at Alder Creek, which is the only open crossing in that section at issue, but for just three events: our Rail Fest, and then a steam event in October, a Halloween-themed steam event, and then a Christmas-themed event in December. If we can work with the city to show a united front to the California Public Utilities Commission on that and satisfy them that we, that collectively, we will lock down that crossing during the rail operations, you know, as each train goes by, then I'm, I'm very confident we can get, get approval to operate for those weekends. So we're talking, you know, you know, $10,000 per, per weekend means a lot to our program, especially considering that we have been shut down over this issue for over a year now. So just wanted to, again, we're working with staff. Everything we're looking for is, is fully within their, you know, power and authority, and just wanted to put it in front of you, and thank you very much for your support.
Jim, what are the dates for your event in September?
24th and 25th. The dates in October and December are yet to be determined, but Rail Fest is always the last full weekend in September.
What's the feature?
24th and 25th.
What's the featured event that people should make sure that they're there for?
Well, all of them, of course. That's why we have so many, such a variety of offerings.
Specifically on the 24th and 25th. What time should I be there?
Well, the, it's, it's a two-day event all day. In fact, we are probably looking to have a steam dinner train on Friday evening as well. So, yeah, I'll, I'll send something out to all of you. Thank you so much.
That may be the same day as the golf tournament.
It is the same day as the golf tournament, but...
Jim, can I just ask a favor?
Yes.
When there's, when there's issues, because this is business from the floor, so we can't even engage with you on this.
Oh.
So I just make, like to make a request that, you know, you can, you can feel free to contact me anytime, and then we can have a discussion offline where we actually can get you some information.
Oh, yeah.
Because we can't do that here.
Oh, yeah, no problem. This, like I said, this was just, this was just to say thank you and to say that, that we're happy that, you know, things are going the right direction. You know, we, the, the, the only reason I'm here is that it had originally been slated to be before you tonight, but there was some still work that needed to be done on it. And so I figured I'd pop in and, and like I said, just say thank you.
Very good.
Okay, our next speaker is Rick Brabrick, and I'm sorry if I'm not saying that correctly.
Not correct anyway.
Well, you can set the record straight when you come up here.
I'm here primarily, I was here about three, three and a half, four years ago, where I think it was the bowling alley at that time, and some of the various nightclubs in the area were taking licenses and running it through a scanner. Can't do that, period. It's an invasion of privacy. The only thing they have a right to know is that you're over 21 and that you're not obviously drunk or hostile, creating a problem. The idea that they're going to collect information on people that created problems, that that would be like going into Walmart and they swipe your license because you might potentially steal something. They don't have a right to that information, and now that the California ID has a ton of information on the license. In fact, four years ago, the downtown nightclubs, I read in an article when we used to have newspapers, that they were selling the information. We can't trust these club owners with information that they don't deserve to have. They are not deputized officers. They need to be stopped immediately because, for one thing, it's nobody's business where people go, and false impressions could be easily assumed. Like, if you go to a bar, you're just a lonely drunk, right? That, that would be an obvious assumption, or you're bored or you're lonely. No, I'm a musician. I just wanted to go for the jam. That was it. And I'm not a heavy drinker. I'm not a bar carouser. I'm none of that. You see what I'm saying? So anyway, I don't, I really don't want them to be taking any personal information. The only thing they need to know is my age. That's it. And if I create a problem, the bouncer can kick me out. That's what they're paid to do. But the idea that they're going to swipe something and, and collect information on a digital reading machine, uh-uh. Got to be stopped immediately. It's unconstitutional. We got a governor that's unconstitutional. When is this stuff going to stop? You know, just because there's a virus in the air, you don't get to throw the Constitution in the trashcan. Look at this idiot with his Emergency Powers Act. What's his emergency now? Nothing. But he's still got it in place, and nobody's doing anything. Most Americans are sitting there, we're like an ostrich, doing absolutely nothing. It's unconstitutional. It needs to stop. If we lose our rights, we're a third world country overnight. It's the most important thing in America is the Constitution, and I don't care how many of the guys that wrote the Constitution happened to own slaves. That has nothing to do with it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's all the requests we have. Is there anybody else? Okay, in which case, we're going to move on to schedule presentations. Annabess Council Member Aquino to do the first one, which is a proclamation for September 22 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Folsom.
Come on up. Well, I appreciate my colleagues indulging me in this every year. It's a little bit strange to have a female member of the council present this proclamation, but my father died of metastatic prostate cancer on July 13th, 2010, so I am always happy to read this in his memory. So this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming the month of September 2022 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Folsom. And whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in men, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates there will be 268,590 new cases of prostate cancer in the USA in 2022, resulting in an estimated 34,500 deaths, and whereas it is estimated 26,890 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and it is estimated 4,140 California men will die from this disease this year, and whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 31% when it spreads to the other parts of the body, and whereas prostate cancer death rates have declined since the mid-1990s due to earlier detection through PSA testing and advances in treatment, and whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their healthcare provider and make informed decisions about whether to be tested for prostate cancer, and whereas the city of Folsom joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance of early detection, testing, and treatment for prostate cancer, now therefore, on behalf of the city of Folsom and the Folsom City Council, we do here proclaim the month of September 2022 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Folsom. To increase awareness about the importance of early detection and treatment of this disease, proclaim this 23rd day of August 2022.
Would you like to say a few words?
Always. Q is the key. Thank you, sir. And thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and a special thanks to Krista and Lydia, who put the proclamation together every year. So anyhow, there's a lot of wherethes in a proclamation. I'd like to get down to kind of the nitty-gritty, is men need to get tested. Okay? And let's just say, at 40, you need a benchmark, a PSA, prostate-specific antigen, big word, it's a blood test. So when you go in for a physical, you get a little extra blood, maybe three drops, and they do a number. The numbers are meaningful in a diagnosis. Let's get a little bit personal. Prostate cancer in early stages has no symptoms, and I mean zero. So the key is to get the test, to kind of figure it out. If you get symptoms, you're going to need immediate treatment and usually a lot of it. We need to avoid that. Okay? To get a little personal, I was diagnosed and treated 25 years ago, and I've been working with prostate cancer guys ever since. 25 years ago, if you had a PSA of four, they got a little concerned, and they wanted to test you with a biopsy. Biopsy's no fun for a man. So anyhow, I started with a low PSA of like four, and it kept moving, and I kept, I ended up with three biopsies until they finally figured it out, that, yeah, you do have it. But 25 years ago, you didn't have choices and treatment. Radiation was a big maybe, too broad beam, very damaging. Seed implants, which is a radioactive thing, was new, and was about as good as a biopsy. It was very random. So in my case, I had a radical prostatectomy. Also, in my case, I did very well with it. So 25 years on, my PSA is 0.01, basically a non-detect. So the doctor likes to tell me, "You've been cured," and I said, "No, I consider myself in remission because I've got guys that I work with who've had all kinds of treatment, had removal, duh-duh. 10, 15 years later, it recurs." So it's something you don't go away from. If you've been tested, you've been treated, you need to get a test regularly. In my case, I'm a little rabid, shall we say? I get tested every six months because I hang out my little test sheet to the guys in my group and say, "I get tested. I just do this because I want to make sure you get tested." So anyhow, since COVID, it's been a little bit rough. I just started back in in-person meetings in June with a limited group, and I went to the meeting Tuesday. The Sacramento group had their first in-person meeting since March of 2020. So it's been a tough couple of years, guys, and hopefully all the women will get their man and then get him tested. It's not a big deal, but you need to get started on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, sir.
Goodness. Thank you. And our next item is an informational briefing from Sacramento Area Council of Governments, which we typically refer to as SECOG, regarding the Blueprint Project, also known as the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, or as I refer to it, the MTP. Welcome, Jim.
Yeah, maybe I can make a couple of comments before James goes. So it is one of the delights of my service for the city, actually sitting on the board of SECOG. It's extraordinarily complicated how transportation projects get funded, but in simplest form, the state and federal funding that comes for infrastructure projects gets funneled through SECOG. And SECOG, you know, sometimes gets cast as a, an overlord, and, but that is a complete misread of the situation. SECOG is composed of all of the individual government entities in the region, all, you know, six counties and every city within those counties, and we collectively plan for transportation projects across that entire region. James Corliss, who's here tonight, basically at my, at my request originally, has been doing the beginning parts with his staff of developing a new version of the MTP, which will be referred to as Blueprint, as you can see. And I really hope that, at the end, you can preserve a couple of minutes to talk about the Green Zones, Green Means Go, Youth Leadership Academy, and some of the other, you know, mega-region and good stuff that SECOG's up to.
Absolutely. Be happy to.
And I'm probably going to have some questions for you, so.
Great.
Welcome.
You're good? All right. Thanks so much. A pleasure to be here. Again, James Corliss, Executive Director of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Indeed, as Council Member Kozlowski said, this is kind of our, our preview run through all the boards and councils around the region, and to give you a bit of an update on our work and a preview for what's ahead. Because as, as Council Member Kozlowski said, we are about to begin a pretty in-depth update of the region's long-range transportation and growth plan that'll go through 2050. As also the council member said, I think you know this, but for, for a metropolitan planning organization, a regional agency that covers this much territory and this much area, to have every single local government on the board, all 28, six counties and 22 cities, sitting around that table twice a month, is really unique. Doesn't happen very much. So you have a voice, and that's important. The long-range plan, and again, here, you know, the, the long mouthful, the six-letter acronym is the MTPSES. It is the Long Range Plan for the Six-County Region that has to meet lots of tests. We want it to achieve lots of goals. And in this case, we are, we are calling it and rebranding it the Blueprint because it has been actually, by the time this should be adopted in 2024, 20 years since the adoption of the Voluntary Growth Compact in this region called the Blueprint back in 2004. So a few things. I'm going to really give you some high-level kind of previews of what's ahead in this regional plan, and then, as actually Council Member Kozlowski said, tell you a little bit about some of the initiatives that are already underway that are related to the implementation of our last plan. So one thing to know, however you feel about growth, we're a fast-growing region. In fact, in the last census, we are the fastest-growing metropolitan region now in California. The coastal regions have slowed, as you probably are well aware, because you're a recipient. A lot of folks are moving from the coast, from the Bay Area, right, are moving up here to Folsom, to the foothills, to Placer County, to Tahoe. So that growth rate is strong. It will remain strong. But if you look out over the horizon of the next 25 years, it is going to slow for all kinds of reasons. And so the growth rate in our last plan versus this current plan is going to slow. We're still going to see a lot of growth. We have a lot of growth ahead of us, and the choices we make around infrastructure and land use and housing and everything else are going to be essential to how well we grow, how sustainably we grow, but the growth rate overall will slow. We're taking an approach on this next plan of what we call triple bottom line, and, or sometimes known as the three Es. So thinking about equity and making sure that every single person in this region has access to opportunity, thinking about economic growth and economic prosperity, and finally thinking about environmental sustainability. So those, as we call triple bottom line, are going to be the framework that governs this plan. Councilman Kozlowski talked, of course, about transportation. That is how many of you come to know us, and there's a lot of things that we do in partnership with your city, in partnership with special districts around the region, to invest funds, federal funds and state funds in transportation. The last funding round for, that we've done as a regional agency here at SECOG, among the projects, the Scott Road Project was actually funded, Empire Ranch, a small piece of a large project, and in previous cycles, White Rock Road right here in Folsom as well, has been part of our investments, and of course, a lot of the trail network.
Just, to get it into what we typically refer to of the Folsom lingo, James is talking about the Empire Ranch Road Interchange. That was money that went in, that went toward the design of that, and White Rock Road is actually the portion of the connector that is part of Folsom.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Part of the plan, and part of the reason that we're rebranding this as a Blueprint, is because we do believe we're at a place in the region here where we need to ask some pretty big questions. How we're going to grow, how we're going to accommodate growth, where that growth happens, how we phase infrastructure with the timing of growth, how we both basically balance greenfield, suburban revitalization, and urban infill. That's kind of our growth portfolio, if you will. And we're developing, and we're going to be developing, three kind of alternative scenarios. Now, for all kinds of reasons, in the past plans, those scenarios have been really kind of hard to distinguish between. We sort of have a trajectory, and you can poke holes and ask questions, but this time around, we're going to open it up much, much bigger and broader, and really try to get some, some real different scenarios happening. And we're going to model those scenarios, and we're also going to give you some really interesting measures and metrics through all of them. So generally speaking, of the three scenarios, and this is sort of, the blue is the sort of existing community footprint, the light blue is future developing communities. So we're going to be looking at different scenarios that actually have different paces and shapes of outward growth, sort of a balance, really, of sort of outward growth and inward revitalization, and a lot more inward revitalization. So three different scenarios, and we have some really interesting ways in which we think we can provide all kinds of metrics. Of course, about, as many of you know, we have to meet all kinds of federal and state requirements on air quality and greenhouse gas emission reduction from transportation. But we also, we're looking at, what's our pavement condition look like in the future? What's our transit service look like in the future? How do we access jobs and healthcare and schools and opportunity? And even on this one, we think we might even be able to look at some, some, even some health data from physical activity and active modes and traffic safety. So should be pretty interesting. So this is a yearly, a year in 2022 to really set up the beginning of this plan. I'll give you a timeline here in a second. We want to do a lot of outreach engagement. This will be early 2023, so next calendar year, but we'd love to make sure that you, Folsom residents, the entire region, has a chance to really weigh in at that right time, most likely when there's going to be those kinds of choices around those different pathways, and we have a lot of data to present. So set up here right now. We're working with your staff very heavily on transportation, growth, land use, housing, jobs. Remember, this is a plan that goes out to 2050. It is very hard to go out that far, but, but we're working with your staff to basically put those, those numbers and that data together. Next year is the big year to do a lot of the outreach and education. We'll have a lot of sessions for elected officials, for residents, and we'll be picking a, or developing out of those three scenarios, one pathway or one final scenario, and the goal is to adopt this plan in 2024. And then, as, as Council Member Kozlowski said, I just want to touch on a couple of other really ways in which the plan gets implemented. So it's no good just having a plan, do it, have it sit on the shelf and gather dust. We've got some, I think, really creative initiatives, really important initiatives. I mentioned our funding programs, largely transportation funding. Well, now, we're actually getting more into infrastructure funding as well through some state budget, our Green Means Go program. We have a trails plan and our mega-region efforts, so I'm just going to end on a couple of these slides. Really exciting effort. I mentioned the coastal regions losing some population, migration inwards and into inland California, the foothills, the Tahoe, and even to Reno really now is kind of our mega corridor. So we have a mega-region working group. Council Member Kozlowski sits on this, four members of SECOG, four members of the Bay Area Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and four members of the San Joaquin Council of Governments. We have a dozen projects here, highway and rail, especially around passenger rail, with all the money now available at the federal level, and also through the state budget deal that just got done. We have a huge chance to actually build out a true regional rail network, and I'm not actually talking high-speed rail. I'm just talking medium speed, get to the Bay Area, get up and down the valley, up to Placer County and Auburn. North-south, we're going to be seeing the ACE rail, the commuter rail in the Bay Area. be extended to Sacramento and Elkhorn Boulevard, and the connection to the Sacramento International Airport in the next 18 months. And we're looking at the feasibility of going north from there to Marysville and Chico, because that market, we think, is a growing market and a really important one. So that's a mega-region working group. We're trying to join forces across those 16 counties in order to go and advocate and lobby for, as I said, a lot of funding. Our trails plan, I know you're the home of trails. I don't have to sell trails to you, or the Johnny Crash Trail, or anything else. But what I would say is if you zoom back at our region across six counties, it's a little bit of a metaphor, I think, about the, the, the pros and the cons, the opportunities, the challenges. It's a very disconnected network. You know the Folsom Trails, you know the American River Parkway. But we have an opportunity in this region, over the next decade, to link every single community with a first-class-one network of trails, safe, convenient, enjoyable, that will be a transformational, we believe, in terms of people beginning, being able to get from point A to point B, in terms of economic development, in terms of tourism, think about that rail network overlaid with this trail network, and it is a game changer. So we just released this regional trails plan. All of your city and county staff, but also special districts, utility districts, levy control districts, reclamation districts, each have a part of actually completing this entire regional network, which, again, it's about 1,000 miles of new trail that we'd like to see connecting the entire region. We have worked very closely over the last few years with our economic partners, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, Metro Chamber, Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce and Valley Vision, and released a, an economic prosperity strategy. We know we are too reliant on government jobs, no disrespect to any of us that work in that sector. We're too reliant, and we can't be reliant on that in the future. And so we need to be intentional. This strategy, which is online, we worked very hard on, responds to an economic analysis done of our economy a few years ago, and, and leans heavily on food and agriculture, on health and biotech, and innovated and advanced mobility, which we believe is, is, is one of our, one of our economic paths forward. And then finally, last but not least, thinking about the next generation of leaders. We have an awesome program we do every year with our high school students from across all six counties. The Secog Board is one of the few places that elected officials come and sit across counties with other elected officials. This Youth Leadership Academy is one of the few places that high school students come and sit across county lines with other high school students around the six counties. We bring many of you, we would invite you this next year. Number one, we get, we do get a lot of Folsom students, which is really nice. We, but many of you come as elected officials, we get members of Congress, state legislators come and talk to these kids about public service, public policy, civic engagement, regional planning, and they seem to love it. So that's a good thing. I'm going to end on that note, because that's one of the, one of our, one of our favorite programs. But clearly happy to answer any questions. And again, really a heads up for a lot of the engagement and, and outreach and partnership that we're looking from, from you all and your residents starting in early next calendar year. So thanks so much for having me.
Thanks, James. I, with regard to the Youth Leadership Academy, we had, we have had a lot of Folsom kids that have participated in that from both of our high schools. And I got to be the guest speaker and receive, receiver of all the zinger questions one day at that class. And it's interesting, the kids that are attracted to this particular program don't have much of a filter when it comes to asking hard questions. So it was, it was a grueling session of answering questions about planning strategies and bicycle racks and all kinds of things. So it's well worth it, and I would encourage any of you to participate if you get the chance. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions. I, I thought this was going to be a little bit closer to the ground. So I'm just going to make comment, first of all, because I don't know how many people in the room or that might be watching online or on Channel 14 on Saturday morning. But the way the presentation was given, I, I think we kind of skipped over the part that the Blueprint is a big, a big giant 70,000-foot regional plan, which doesn't, I don't want anybody to think that Secog, Plan, Folsom Ranch, or that you guys get in the weeds in the planning that takes place and the development approval that takes place in the individual member jurisdictions. So I think that's important. All of that information, of course, is taken into account when the Blueprint is, or the MTP is being put together. So my further, like, actually on-the-ground question, what are you guys going to do to get that last bit of the connector in Folsom between Payon Road and Eldorado County line back into the program? And I'm, I'm hoping that the new agreement that was signed as part of Measure A, the agreement that everybody just finished, and I'm, I'm hoping that we are going to get to a place where we can get that, that last large section of the connector adjacent to Rancho and within the unincorporated county down headed toward Jackson Highway can get included in the plan. Because, you know, past longtime member of the STA Board and past chair and been on the Connector JPA for, for several years now. And we, we need, that roadway needs to go all the way from Eldorado County. Well, Eldorado County is going to be a separate issue. But it needs to, it's, it's going to help take traffic off of 50, 99, and I-5. And I know there's been a dispute between many people in the region. And I'm just hoping that that agreement is going to get us out of that quagmire so that we can get the rest of the funding in place, so that we can get the whole connector built. Any comments?
Lots. How long do you have? Look, and, and so how to, how to synthesize this. So as you know, Mayor Howell, the end segments of the connector, the piece here in Folsom and the piece down on Cameron Road and Elk Grove have actually very short-term independent utility, right? And we have an agreement with the Connector JPA since 2016 to not only support those, but to invest in those. This plan, as you said, the Blueprint plan, and we do, while you do the land use planning, we coordinate with you, because how we phase and time growth and infrastructure is critical. So the reason those two end segments, so we've invested in those and supported those, right, is because near-term, Folsom Ranch, SEPA in Elk Grove, they're really important. The middle segment of the connector, I think, is what you're talking about, what we would call the middle.
You, you might be calling it the middle sector. It has a segment name I just off the top of my head can't remember what it is.
So the question on the connector is timing, is it, is transportation benefit, but also what it, what it might have in terms of unintended consequences in terms of growth, right? And our concern on the connector middle segment in terms of timing has always been, what does that do to the balance of growth in the region? This has always been the question. I have exactly the same question on the Green Line extension to the airport. Because in that case, actually, we're not getting enough of the density and growth on that corridor to justify ridership, right? So we are, to answer your question, we're absolutely going to look at the connector, as we will all the projects that come into the next plan. And the MOU has a process by which we're looking at the greenhouse gas impacts in particular of all the projects, that one, that piece in particular that's not in our plan for construction. So that will all be on the table and will all be examined. I can't sit here tonight and say, this project's in or this project's out. I can tell you, we've got legitimate concerns over the timing and the phasing and the unintended development and land use impacts of the middle segment of the connector.
Just, just one little reminder that, that project was approved by the voters in 2004. And the, I think the, what you're referring to is the unintended growth, I believe, is the Cordova Hills project with Sacramento County approved, I don't know, 18 or more years ago? I never thought it was a good project, but it got approved.
This is the problem of us disconnecting transportation and growth and land use for a long time. Actually, Cordova Hills is, is in our, is in our MTPSES, our current one.
But there's member, let's say, a member agency that doesn't want to see that project move forward.
Sorry?
There's one of the cities that is a member of Secog does not want to see that project move forward.
Are you, are you asking what would happen if one of the agencies in Secog doesn't want to see that project move forward?
No, I'm, I, I know what's, what's going on.
Okay.
It's, that's just what I think is, is part of the holdup.
So, all right.
I think, can I, can I jump in just for one moment? I think.
Oh, please do.
Resolving the longstanding conflict over when the connector should be built is probably not something we're going to achieve tonight. But the, the MOU that was signed between STA and Secog was specifically intended to create a series of review processes and gateways that will make it easier for everybody to be in the same room and talk about that so that we can pick a time that is appropriate for it. And because there's likely to be funding available for it if that measure passes. So the, the question has to be called, basically. And the majority, you know, the, the wider group of Secog Board members is game for that challenging conversation to happen sooner rather than later.
And there's a lot of these issues with transportation projects and growth that are happening all over the region. And, and closer to you here is Jackson Highway. And, and thinking about how that, those specific plans in Rancho and the county are being built and when the investments are going in, these are very, very real issues. So your, your challenge and your question, the connector, will be on the table like it will for a lot of other projects as we get into the next MTPSES. I will tell you, we are that close from not achieving our regional greenhouse gas emissions reduction target. And that may, you know, may not be the number-one priority for, for some, but it is really important we do that. Because if we don't reach our DFG reduction target, we will be less competitive or even cut off from a very state transportation funding that we actually have been, have been very successful in winning, like the Gold Line double tracking the last couple of years, and US 50. So this is a delicate, a delicate balancing act.
And, and, and a big part of the problem has been that there are differences in the technical opinions related to the benefits that would be achieved by construction of the connector versus not constructing the connector. And that's, that's kind of an issue, because I think Secog is using one model, and lots of other people are using a different model. And I, for one, am not convinced that the model that Secog is using is, is considering the benefits of reduced traffic on 50, 99, and 5, because people are going to take the long end of that triangle and not the other two sides of it.
All I can tell you is that we have a modeling conference every year where people come from around the country to understand our travel model. And it's the only one that's being used by the state of California to basically bless the plan, which is critical to winning state funding. We will do the best, most intensive, engaging, transparent process we can. We cannot take everybody's general plans into our plan, we cannot take all the transportation projects, right? It's a balancing act, and we've got to meet state and federal goals that are tough, that are strict.
Okay. I, I, I got my complaints out. Anybody else have any other questions for James?
I just have a comment, James. I just want to thank you for recently, you know, giving through Mike a little over $4 million to my little town here and investing those in the intelligent transportation system and other infrastructure activities. You know, thank you again. And if you see the small, you know, again, couple of quarters, please send it in our way.
I'll keep looking.
We will definitely use it, especially for those.
I will tell you on the Scott Road project that I believe there's going to be a ribbon-cutting on soon. That was like some of the most public outreach and engagement and letters, and it was, it was pretty, pretty remarkable. So we're happy to be able to make that work.
There hasn't been that much, that much activity in Rancho Marietta in years. But for anybody that's ever driven out there, especially in the wintertime, or the residents of Rancho Marietta, many of whom shop here, go to the movies here, dine here, that was, that is a treacherous road, especially in the wintertime, when you're not, you didn't know if it was going to flood. That's, of course, assuming it ever rains again. But that's going to be a really, really good project, and good for the city because it, it will be adjacent to our someday courtyard.
Good. Yeah. Thank you once again. You know, that's, that's a good chunk of, you know, dollars for us to effectively use it. And one more point on this, YLP, allow this one, YLA, not YLP, am I saying? Do you bring those as interns after they get to them, you know?
We, we have a, we have an intern program, and I will say, we have a lot of, I don't believe we've had a lot of YLA students go on, because usually they go into college, and we have interns either at the end of college or coming out of college. We love young people coming out of planning programs and higher ed programs. We do have a lot of returning students, so what's kind of cool is we have mentors. So kids will go through this in ninth or 10th grade and come back as a mentor in 11th and 12th. We've got college kids that have gone through YLA who come back and, and help the other high school students. So we will be recruiting actually really soon, next couple of months. And I don't think we have a problem recruiting here in Folsom, clearly. But, but we'd love to see those kids. And really, actually, like for many things, hybrid has really been helpful to get actually kids in more remote and rural areas to be participating as well, which is also so crucial to understand that urban-rural kind of differences and how kids see a lot of the challenges we have. And as Councilmember Kozlowski said, the best questions and the hardest questions ever have come from these kids, despite the outfits.
And, and if you do hybrid, it reduces the vehicle miles traveled.
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you. Again, we need youth.
Yeah.
Well, in advance, engage in our administrations. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Great. Thank you.
We may need to have a special session just on tiny trail segments that end up being the last, the last bit of connector. Because we have, we have at least two instances in Folsom where there is about a, you know, between 100 and 300-foot gap that is stopping our spectacular trail system from connecting to other parts of the, the trail systems around.
I'm sure your, your fabulous staff know that the active transportation program has been plus-upped through the state budget. So we've actually got about triple 45 million, right, rather than about 17. So that's one. The one I didn't mention, just real quick, is Green Means Go, and Councilmember, you asked me to say this. So, and Mayor Howell, to your point about what does Secog do, we have local control, absolutely. But what we can do is to say, what do you have in terms of re-envisioning existing older commercial corridors to have new economic development, right? So Folsom, along with 25 of the 28 other jurisdictions, you've identified green zones, areas for infill development. And I will tell you, we're really delighted to say that the Urban Land Institute is going to be coming out here this fall and looking at sort of an economic analysis of a lot of your downtown and some of your older corridors. And that's paired with 34 million in the Green Means Go funding for water, sewer, utility upgrades to allow for more repurposing older arterial corridors and strip malls into housing and multifamily and mixed use. Because as much as we can, and we should, discuss, right, new growth and new areas, actually reinvesting in a lot of the existing older places that are suffering is really key as well. And that's, the barriers to doing that are, are many. And so the Green Means Go program is something we're trying to meet our state climate and housing goals, but on local terms, that we might really kind of talk about it as economic revitalization, but it's also a climate strategy. So it's exciting.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks to your staff for, I'm sure, helping prepare this.
This is all them, yeah, they're, they're back here.
Thanks, you guys.
Okay. And our next presentation is going to be a report from our AdHoc City Council Subcommittee on City Properties.
Can you pull that up, Krista?
No, not from here. Are we, well, who will be moving the slides?
I think I can.
You can? Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosario Rodriguez, and Councilmember Sarah Keno and I will be presenting a report from the AdHoc City Council Subcommittee on City Properties. For those of you listening to this for the first time, back on February 8th, Financial Forecast Workshop discussion, we identified three potential ad hoc committees that were identified that could potentially increase revenues to the city to meet financial restraints in the near future. At the February 27 council meeting, the council approved the formation of Resolution 10809 that stated, next slide, that we are to identify and evaluate underutilized city-owned properties and recommend their sale, lease, use, repurpose, or other disposition as an economic development tool for the city. Next slide. The sub, the committee members were Councilmembers Sarah Keno and myself, residents Jennifer Cabrera, who is an architect for state parks, who also does residential work, Robert Goss, who is a retired parking wreck director, Lance Klug, who is a VP of Marketing for Reeve Knight Construction, and who's also very knowledgeable on construction trends. Todd Spielman, who is a president of ST Productions Live, produces concerts across California, including an exclusive contract to operate Quarry Park Amphitheater in Rockland. Clark Whitten, who is a recently retired from the county of Sacramento, where he served as an economic development project manager. And also Park and Racks Commissioner Will Kempton, Brian Wallace, and from choose Folsom, Joe Galliardi. Next slide. So this ad hoc committee was a. So this ad hoc committee, it was a group of 10 members. We had eight meetings. We viewed, actually went out and visited 15 properties, identified 12 that were underdeveloped, three were vacant and/or underutilized. Next slide. So from the, some of the general recommendations that this committee is making is that we are, would like to establish a separate real estate fund in which we would deposit proceeds from the sale of any city-owned property to finance economic development efforts that will generate sustained revenue for the city. Also to consider retaining a commercial real estate professional to assist with the potential evaluation, development, development potential and disposition of properties. Also to investigate the surplus land act process and its potential implications on key surplus properties. And also to reappoint the committee and expand our scope to identify vacant slash underutilized private properties and obstacles that may prevent them from being activated. Next slide.
Okay, so I'm going to take you through the 15 properties. As mentioned, we had 12 that were just undeveloped raw land. We go from zero to 12, but number six is, we kind of took that off the table, that's something the city council is already in negotiations about. Of the three vacant and underutilized properties that we looked at, that's the Einstein Cafe space at the library, the Zittle family amphitheater in the historic district, and Dan Russell Arena, where the rodeo is held every year. Nope, too far. Okay, so the first property is property number zero. This is at the end of Fong Street. It's .21 acres and the recommendation from the committee is to sell this. And let me kind of show you with this little neat pointer here. So obviously this is Folsom Boulevard. Over here is the, you know, Sutter Street in the historic district. Sutter Street obviously runs along here. This is a little remnant that was left over, I believe, from when the Lake Natoma Crossing was constructed. My understanding from Lorraine, our Parks and Rec director, is maybe one of the property owners right in here is interested in purchasing this property. I think there's some things that have to happen in order for the city to sell it. I think a lot has to be actually formed, but the recommendation from the committee is to go ahead and sell this. There's obviously, it's not big enough for us to do anything with. The next two properties, we kind of combined on this slide. It's basically East Natoma and Folsom Lake Crossing together over seven acres. Let me show you a map of these two first and then we can talk about the recommendations. So two different maps. This is a little slow to load, but there we go. Okay, so what do we got here? This is the end of the La Colina neighborhood right here. Obviously, this is East Natoma where you can continue and go over Folsom Lake Crossing, and this is Natoma Street. So you can see, this is the six point whatever acres and it's kind of these three little areas right here.
That parcel on the right, Sarah, was for those that are watching this, that was the state, one of the staging areas when they were building the, the bridge.
Okay. And then the second portion of it is, I don't know why it's two different property things, but two different numbers, but this is the other thing. So, so those are, are the parcels and let's go back to the recommendations here. Again, this is kind of slow to load for some reason. Maybe it's because of where I'm sitting at.
Point it, yeah.
Oh. Well, before I was pointing at the screen, it was working. There we go. Okay, so the recommendation is to continue to study and explore possible uses. There was not consensus really on the committee as to what this could be for, but to consider lot line adjustments of parcels to create usable parcels that possibly could be sold off in the future. Of course, our former Parks and Recreation Director is always thinking about parks and thought maybe this could be considered as a, some sort of design to complement the future Johnny Cash legacy park. And then also, you know, we're always looking for places to do oak tree mitigation, so that could be a possibility. Okay, next one. This is 906 Leeds Dorf, acreage is .15. You're all going to recognize this right away. So this is Karen's Bakery, right here. This is a privately owned lot. And this is our little piece, again, a little thing left over from when Folsom Lake Crossing was built. This is absolutely prime real estate in the historic district and we think this is high, high priority, you know, just a great potential to do something really unique there. The vice mayor mentioned, one of the committee's general recommendations is to have some sort of dedicated real estate fund. For example, if we sell Fong Street, obviously it's not going to result in a lot of revenue, but if we could start stockpiling some of that money away, this is a perfect example of why it would be nice to have some money in a real estate fund because either we need to purchase this property, or they need to purchase this property, or we both need to sell it to some third party so that that thing can be activated and developed. So.
And that could be a little bit difficult, given the recent passing of Cindy.
So recommendations here would be to initiate conversation with the owner of the adjacent lot, just, you know, some casual conversations to start to see if they do have some sort of vision or long-term plan for that property. Also would recommend that we start to investigate the surplus land act process because, as we know, anytime that we want to sell a piece of property, we have to do, you know, in a public meeting, we have to formally declare it as surplus. The council has to adopt a resolution. And then if we go to sell that property, affordable housing developers get the first right of refusal. So we would kind of like to start that process. Once you do that, it's a 60-day window for those affordable housing developers to formally let you know that they're interested. And if they're not, then it kind of opens it up and we can, we can entertain other offers and other ideas. So this for the committee is very, very high priority. The second one is Figaroa at Rodeo Park. This is about four tenths of an acre. So I'll show you a map in a second. This one, we're saying, first of all, I think it's zoned for apartments or something right now. It's not counting toward arena numbers. So the recommendation is to rezone this to park and open space and possibly retain it for a trail connection to Sutter Street. But so the rodeo would normally happen, where's my little pointer? Kind of over here, right? This is the arena. These are the ball fields. And then this is the area we're talking about. And then Sutter Street, Figaroa Street Alley is right here.
Is there a big gray change there, Sarah?
Yes, there is. You would have to have some kind of little footbridge or something like that. But it does seem like having a connection to Sutter Street would, could be a good thing as, as part of our trail system.
And is that all oak trees?
Yes, yeah, a lot of oak trees in there. Okay, next one, similar kind of to this. This is 200 Mormon Street, almost two acres. Again, we're recommending that we rezone to this to park slash open space. This one, you kind of, you, let's see, what did we do? We came down Natoma Street, you kind of, you can park, was it right here? But you look out here, I'm directionally challenged, but when you look out here, you would think you were in Costa Rica. It is jungle-like. That is the only way to describe it. It's never going to be developed. So we're just suggesting that that be rezoned to park slash open space. Next couple properties are little slivers behind Diamond Glen. Not sure that there's much that could be done other than possible tree mitigation, but we are suggesting that perhaps we initiate some conversations with Kikumun regarding a larger vision for that area. And I have had a very initial discussion with their local representative and, and he thought they might be agreeable to have maybe a Zoom meeting or something to just kind of talk about this. But you can see, this is the Diamond Glen neighborhood here and it's just kind of, here's one little sliver here, again, lots of oak trees there already.
And is that adjacent to the railroad?
Yes, it is, yeah. And then here is, is this area right here. And I believe, but somebody can recognize, this must be Kikumun right here. Right, am I right?
That's Bayside Church.
Oh, that's Bayside Church? Okay. Kikumun somewhere over here.
Further up.
Oh, oh, this way? Well, I told you I'm directionally challenged, okay. Next one. The Y property, obviously kind of located right on Folsom Boulevard, a gateway to the city, almost three and a half acres. Here it is, right here, obviously makes a Y. This is the railroad track that comes this way, Folsom Boulevard, and it's this property right here. So going back to the recommendations, I have had a preliminary conversation with Mark Rackevan about this, but right now this property is being used as kind of an annex to our corp yard. And so when you drive down Folsom Boulevard, you'll kind of see these big wood chips there. Mark has indicated that it shouldn't be too difficult to relocate that annex. So we're thinking either take it to the current corp yard or to the new corp yard south of White Rock Road. We're recommending that we look into activating the non-leased portion of the property. Obviously, PSVRR is leasing a portion of it, but there's a good portion of this property that is not leased. And kind of some of the ideas that were floating around with the committee, you talk about, I think Rockland did some kind of Beer Forty thing, or something in Elk Grove, I can't think of the name of it, but kind of the, the idea, if you think of maybe cargo containers or something along those lines, kind of an outdoor beer garden or something, just as one possible option. But certainly, this is a gateway to the city, light rail runs right alongside this and if there's just an opportunity to activate it in some way where we could start bringing in some revenue for the city.
And this is just the superintendent's house that, that is mentioned on the slide that is on the National Register of Historic Places?
Yes, and we're not suggesting that it go anywhere. And the recommendation is to restore and activate it. As you'll recall, I asked a couple of months ago if we could include it in the evaluation that the, I don't know if it's an architect or something, yeah, when they evaluate the depot building, they're going to evaluate this at the same time. Also Jennifer Cabrera, who sits on the committee and works for state parks, said they have used a nonprofit called Historicor to, to restore some of their historic properties. It kind of is along the lines of AmeriCorps or the Peace Corps where it's, you know, it's kind of mobilizing volunteers to restore some historic properties. And so I did a little bit of, of looking on their website and it's something that we might want to consider. And then, of course, developing a long-term vision for the site because, again, this is, this is a gateway to Folsom. It is a very visible property. And of course, this would be, developing a vision, being mindful of, of the PSVRR's activities. Okay, the next one is the RT parking lot at Glen Station, almost three acres. I just put a very simple recommendation there, but, but the committee agrees with the direction that the city is already going, that this absolutely is a perfect location for high-density transit-oriented development. I know I talked to Pam about this and there are some things that have to happen there. I think a density change and, and a SEQA analysis, but this is something that, again, we, we think is high priority for the city. And I think maybe going into this committee, at least for me personally, we're thinking we know more about the possibility for short-term revenue, but what has become apparent is by activating and developing some of these properties, this results in long-term sustained development for the city. Because obviously, this results in increased property taxes and depending on what you put on some of these properties, for example, at 906 Leeds Dorf, you know, that has the potential to result in some sales tax revenue too. So I know the city staff is working on this one already and we love everything that we're seeing there so far. And there, of course, it is. And of course, we're very mindful that that is also a current parking lot for RT and so there will have to be parking for those commuters incorporated into that.
Do we have a traffic count on the number of spaces that are typically occupied?
I don't know, but when our committee went, we went on a Friday morning at 7:30 and there were hardly any cars there. But we're also mindful that, you know, a lot more people are working from home during COVID and stuff, so it probably was not an accurate reading of, of what that is normally.
And do, and we own that as opposed to RT?
That's correct. We own the parking lot and then RT maintains the station.
Okay, so we should probably see if there's a way to find out what the typical, what, what the typical maximum amount of parking spaces is at that particular station.
Okay, property number 11. This is kind of a unique one. This is on Park Shore Drive. If you kind of drive down Park Shore, you pass Power Schools on the right and you keep going around the curve. I had no idea this existed, but there is a gated property there that is owned by WAPA, which is the Western Area Power Authority, kind of similar to the Cal ISO, but, but different. Don't ask me how, but that's just, you know, that's all I know. And so this particular property is just over half an acre. It has no access from the street, but of course it is accessible from the bike trail. And so we kind of went tromping through here. So you kind of enter the WAPA property over here with their automatic gate and then you kind of have to walk through here to get there. And then they have another, we have another fence that's around here. This also does act as a retention basin, so it does fill up with water during the rainy seasons. But again, you can access it here from the bike trail. So of course, we thought about, you know, is there some sort of potential river district opportunity here? I don't think the WAPA folks were too excited when we proposed that, but maybe the WAPA folks would be interested in purchasing this, just to, you know, give themselves a little bit of a security buffer. Pam, you and I were watching that, that webinar with the students from UC Berkeley and somebody from HCD talked about land swaps with the state, so maybe there's another piece along the river district that we would like. So anyway, some, some things to pursue here, but the recommended options on this one was to, you know, ask, talk to WAPA and see if they had any interest in purchasing. And depending on what they say, we can, we can go from there. Glen Drive, this is just over three acres. It's kind of two different parcels or areas. One, we need to retain the southern parcel because it does contain an existing bike trail in the Willow Creek corridor. But the other one, this one, the smaller one, I believe this, is this Bayside Church, maybe? And they always have the need for additional parking. And so we're thinking maybe that, the owner of that property might be interested in acquiring that, you know, the adjacent property. So again, the recommendation.
That might be semocommercial, I'm not sure.
It is, yeah. I was deliberately just saying property owner, but, so anyway, the recommendation is to see if they're interested in possibly acquiring that property for, for additional needs. So it's always good to have a, an artist and published author and graphic designer on your committee. And so Brian Wallace very graciously did this little summary for me and sent it over today. So, you know, some of these obviously have multiple things, some of them we may retain and activate, we may decide to develop it or we may sell it. So there aren't too many that are absolutely clear-cut, but there's definitely some possibilities here. Then we go to the three properties that are, that are currently vacant or what we would consider underutilized. The first is the Einstein Cafe space, or what was formerly the Einstein Cafe at the library. And we did visit the space. It's only about 800 square feet, so not huge. It does not have a bathroom in it. So if it were to be used for a preschool or daycare or something, you'd have to either build a bathroom or, or children would have to be escorted to the bathrooms in the library or in that corridor. But, so we are recommending that we refer to this to the library commission, but with some very kind of specific direction. So refer it to their, to library commission for their input on how best to, number one, activate the space and number two, generate revenue. And we're encouraging them to look at potential uses beyond just food vendors. So as far back as I can remember, it's been like a little sandwich, ice cream, you know, drink place. But some other things that we thought about, maybe a tutoring club or lots of coding clubs that are happening. I know Lorraine had mentioned the possibility of doing, you know, a preschool or something in there. So we are recommending that this be sent to the library commission and ask them to report back to the council with their recommendations in the next 90 days. The next one we looked at was the Zittle Family Amphitheater. And this is why, when the vice mayor and I kind of got together to, to ask folks to be on the, the committee, we specifically wanted Todd Spielman on it because of his experience as a concert promoter and his work, he works with all kinds of local jurisdictions, but also the city of Rockland. He is the exclusive operator for Quarry Park Amphitheater in Rockland. So in addition to the concerts that he puts on there, if you're a third party and you want to come rent that space, you go through him, you do not go through the city of Rockland. So again, we're going to recommend that this go to one of our commissions, this go to the Parks and Rec Commission for their input, again, with some specific direction on how best to activate the space, which also activates the surrounding district, and possibly generate additional revenue. And I just want to kind of put that word possibly in there because it's always good to, to generate revenue, but again, also, I think the original kind of intent maybe for that space, it's kind of a gathering space, families, right, promote community. So, but, but also, obviously, the point of this committee is to generate revenue, so that's definitely a consideration. And so we want to ask the Parks and Rec Commission whether they think it would be better to outsource all operations to a third party, all of what they do at Quarry Park in Rockland, or continue the existing partnership with FHDA with the possibility of adding a limitation on the number of free uses per year. Because as, we've had some conversations, right now, we don't limit the number of free uses that FHDA gets at the amphitheater. And what we see happening is that organizations that would tend to rent directly from the city and pay a rental fee are going through FHDA and they're getting it for free. And so we are losing some revenue there. And so we're going to ask the Parks and Rec Commission if you agree to, to study this and again, report back to the council with their recommendations within the next 90 days.
Sarah, at Quarry Park, is Sarah, at Quarry Park, is that amphitheater located in an area where it's closed off? Or is it open like ours is?
I haven't been there, I'm assuming you can close it off, but you can close off ours.
It's just it's a little bit more difficult to close off ours, given where it's located and how it was built, but I was just curious.
Okay. So and the final property we looked at was the Dan Russell Arena. Again, we recommended this be referred to the Parks and Recreation Commission for their input on how best to activate the space and to generate revenue. We're asking them to consider a public-private partnership or issuing an RFP for promoter to manage and operate the venue, also to explore other uses. One of the ideas that somebody mentioned to me, somebody who's involved in showing dogs, said, oh, you could have dog shows there, so, you know, who knew? And again, report back to the council with recommendation within 90 days. So we're going to make some recommendations for the next steps. We have a fantastic committee, they graciously volunteered their time and their expertise, and Vice Mayor Rosario Rodriguez and I have assured them that this is not going to be a committee where we've done all this work and we're just going to put it on the shelf. We want some things to come out of this committee. So we're going to propose these ideas to you tonight, and assuming the city attorney doesn't have any issue with us giving some direction tonight, this is what we're going to ask for you, if you concur, to support these recommendations. So again, pretty easy, referring the Einstein Cafe space to the Library Commission, and the Zittle Family Amphitheater, and the Dan Russell Arena to the Parks and Rec Commission, instructing them with those specific directions, and then things to consider, and then come back to us within 90 days. And then also asking the city manager to return to the council with a few items. Number one would be a plan and timeline for selling property zero, which is the end of Fong Street, again, no use for us, and somebody else might get a benefit from it, and we'll get a little bit of cash. Second would be some information regarding the Surplus Land Act as it relates to key properties such as 906 Leedestorf. If we know that we want that property to be developed, ours in conjunction with the private one, if we do the surplus land act process now, declare it surplus, all that sort of stuff, and we get through the 60 days and we don't have any affordable home builders who are interested, which is unlikely on that very, very small parcel, then that gives us other options, and we know we have other options. So we want to know about kind of initiating that process. Also, possibly for Glen Station, but I know you have a timeline that you're working with there, Pam. Also possibly, you know, not possibly, a plan for activation of unleased portion of the Y property, which again, would involve the relocation of the Corpia Annex, and then a plan to engage adjacent property owners on Park Shore and Glen Drives, and obviously, we would have to hire an appraiser to determine the fair market value of those city properties. So with that, we are happy to answer any of your questions or take your comments, but would also appreciate knowing if you concur with the recommendations, and would be willing to give the go-ahead to take the next steps.
I just want to, you know, sincerely thank the committee, it's a lot of work. I know about five months ago, six months ago, we talked about it, and both my colleagues stepped in, I just want to say that with a clap, thank you for outstanding presentation. I didn't know that all those surplus lands are out there. Of course, I'm only 19 months on the city council. The only thing, especially the third bullet, I know there are so many nonprofits very passionate to build some sort of tiny homes to uplift underprivileged people, unhoused people, as any of those small pieces can be a candidate, because no one wants in the, you know, in the center of their community to build the affordable, not affordable, tiny homes. Just a thought, think on it, I know we can sell, we can get the money, and the same time nonprofits are doing some fundraisers and trying to build, whether $30,000, one tiny home. Likewise, for $300,000, 10 tiny homes, 10 homeless can be uplifted and get onto the real life. Just a thought, especially on the third one, but on the first and second, yep, I'm on board. That's my comment, but the big point is here, I want to thank both of you and our committee members. Brian, I can see the picture there at the beginning, I can see that's a Brian. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chalim Chirla. I would just say that, you know, obviously, additional housing for all income levels is important, but just remember, the charge of our committee was to find a way to generate revenue from the city, and what you're proposing would not do that, so.
Absolutely. I just want to make a thought in that point.
Any questions, comments?
No, I also am delighted by the progress that y'all have made. Thank you to the vice mayor and Councilwoman Aquino and the entire committee that worked on this, and I am especially happy to see the Dan Russell Arena be looked at again for ways to activate that space. It's been a one that I've been calling for for a long time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys for all of your work on this, I'm in favor of moving forward with this. I'm having a hard time imagining a dog show at the rodeo.
Let's throw it out there.
Does that mean that the-
Yorkie busting.
Just for clarification, I think there was about nine parks identified before, they are not part of this one, or it is part of this one?
We did not look at any existing parks.
Existing-
Or park, dedicated park space, no.
Space, okay, got it, thanks.
I just wanted to add my thank you to the ad hoc subcommittee, really appreciate all the hard work, and certainly, we are willing to make our way through this list.
Okay, so as I'm hearing, we have at least three votes to move forward, right? Okay, and do you have any questions for us, or any clarification on anything?
Not at this time.
Okay, well, we have many members of our committee in the room today, so thank you very much for your hard work, and keep begging us if we're not doing what we said we would do, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, all of you. So with that, we will move on to the consent calendar, does anybody want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull number 13, I have a possible conflict of interest, and would like to recuse myself from that item.
Mayor, I would like to pull item number 18.
18?
Yes.
I will move items four through 22, with the exceptions of 13 and 18.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion, a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Chirla?
Yes.
And Howe?
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney, should I leave the room, or is that necessary?
Okay, I'll move item 13, resolution 10899.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Chirla?
Yes.
And Howe?
Yes.
Okay, YK?
Mayor, this is a comment rather than a question. Josh Bosch is here. You know, recently, because it was a council recess, I made a few visits to Bay Area for one of those semiconductor technology, Santa Clara. Bay Area is the hub for technologies. I was driving around, very hot of the city, Santa Clara Convention Center, most of us know. I have been waiting there for a minute, 25 seconds to take a left turn. No intelligent traffic signals. I just want to call out loud, oh, James left, but hopefully, he will be hearing, but I want to give the kudos to, you know, our city staff, Mark, thank you again. It's not only the Bay Area, and after that, I traveled to Washington, state, Seattle, Bellevue, uh-uh, I got to wait there 90 seconds to take a left turn. And afterwards, I went to Vancouver, it's the same thing. The reason I want to bring that, it's an awesome thing, we don't know that, our signals comes in three seconds, four seconds, when you are there through this intelligent traffic system, and awesome people like Mark and, you know, Josh, I know you have been always living, breathing, drinking since you got hired into this. I want to, you know, send that sincere kudos, of course, our signal team out there with the, another Josh, I believe? Please send my sincere thank you to them, this is awesome. We don't know that what we are enjoying, sometimes we say we can't wait six more seconds to get to the Costco, that's what we talk, but visit other cities, it's 10, 60 to 90 seconds, 120 seconds. Thank you once again, I'm going to make a motion on this one, I have no other things.
I'll second.
We have motion, a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Chirla?
Yes.
And Howe?
Yes.
That moves us to new business.
While he is coming, I think, I want to thank partnering Camly Harn here for helping us on this endeavor, you know, please take that and pass it to your management as well. Thank you for the great partnership.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Howe, member of the council, I'm Mark Rackevan, your Public Works Director. The item before you this evening is an ordinance to codify residential permit parking here in the city of Folsom, specifically in the historic district. You'll recall, I was before you last month to report on the outcomes of our six-month pilot program in the historic district, which we concluded was largely a success. The residents were pleased with the outcome for the most part, did not seem to have any adverse impacts throughout the rest of the district. And so this council asked me to bring an ordinance back for your consideration. In asking that, you did ask for some latitude to decide many of the variables that would be associated with adopting a permit parking program. And so we've crafted a combination of an ordinance, which is very simple and codifies our ability to designate permit parking in our community, and then it will be accompanied by a resolution that will have all the specifics that you asked for, such as the ability to determine the area, the days and times, the numbers of permits, and the cost of permits. And that will be by resolution, but what we would like to discuss this evening are how you would like to define those different variables as it relates to this specific portion of the historic district that was the subject of the pilot program. So just to refresh everyone's memories, the pilot program was an area primarily made up of Figaroa Street between Scott and Reading, and it was actually the half-blocks from Figaroa to Sutter, along Scott Street, Wool, and Decatur. There has been, before I go on, the specific restrictions that were the subject of the pilot were no parking on Friday nights and Saturday nights from 6:00 PM to midnight, except by permit. We do not expect that the residents are going to ask that those days and times change, and so it is our belief that that will be what gets adopted into the resolution unless the council desires to go in another direction. In terms of the area of the permit zone, there is some possibility that the residents may want to extend it by a block in every direction, so to capture the 500 block on Figaroa, for example, and possibly go up to the Scott, the portion between Scott and Bridge, and then whether or not to extend those side streets all the way to Mormon. That's something that we intend to discuss with the residents following tonight's action, but prior to bringing the ordinance back for the final reading, and prior to bringing the resolution to you. So in terms of the other variables, we did research other permit ordinances and programs throughout the state of California. This was an exercise my staff and I undertook to support the ad hoc subcommittee that brought all the various parking recommendations to the council. So some of this information is a couple years outdated, but nevertheless, I think it all still provides a good valid context from which you can draw your own recommendations on how to craft our particular program. So first off, the number of permits per address and the fees, there are 13 of the programs that we looked at that specified the number of permits per either address or per vehicle. San Francisco, for example, does not assign it to an address, they just said, if you want a permit, it's going to cost you $144 a year per vehicle, and it was the same thing with Monterey on a much smaller scale. But you'll see that most of the other programs were based on a per address, and it averaged out to 2.5 permits per address, and the costs were quite a range on them, too, from free in some cases, up to the $144 a year in San Francisco. The average for that turned out to be $25 per permit fee. One thing I would point out is a number of the jurisdictions that offer free permits, you have to keep in mind that they have a more complete, more robust parking management program that also features, in a lot of cases, meters, paid parking garages, dedicated parking enforcement. So they have a lot of other revenue sources that go into parking that perhaps help subsidize the fee costs for the residents, you know, that's certainly not a position we're in right now. So I think that that tends to drive that average permit fee down a little bit lower than maybe we might want to consider. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at that average cost.
And Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the city of Sacramento, wasn't the parking fee program put into place to pay for the arena?
I'm not sure about that, that sounds true, but I can't verify that.
I think that was a big part of the funding for the arena, because I remember years ago, getting a phone call from somebody at the city of Sacramento that asked if the city of Folsom would participate in that parking program, so that a portion of our parking fees would be, would go to pay for the arena, and I said, we're happy to give you 100% of our parking fees because we prohibit paid parking in Folsom. It was when we were trying to make sure that the state wasn't going to take the parking structure in the historic district after redevelopment went away. But I'm pretty sure that's where that money goes.
Okay. So if you like, I'll pause on this slide if we want to initiate discussion about the numbers of permits that you'd like to see in the historic district and the cost as well.
Well, I have a question. What do the permits look like? Is it, is it a sticker you put in a window? Is it like a handicap placard where you could pass it from one car to the next, or how did we do it for the pilot?
We handled the pilot in a very, very generous, very broad pattern, because we wanted to give everyone an opportunity to participate, we just wanted to gauge participation. So if people wanted placards instead of stickers, we consented to that. Moving forward into a permit program, our vision is that we would rely on decals that are affixed to the vehicle, that the policy would be that the vehicle has to be somehow associated with an address that's within the boundary, and that the decal cannot be removed from that car until, you know, the car is moved, the person moves, or until the next year when they have to put a new decal on. We can also consider temporary placards, but I think that's a topic for later on in this discussion about guest placards. You know, if we want to have each address have the opportunity for temporary visitors, say, here, here, just put this in your windshield and you'll be okay. I know the ordinance was written to exempt other types of vehicles, such as service vehicles, delivery vehicles, so those aren't necessary to have any kind of a placard, we're just talking about overnight visitors. But in this case, I think our vision is that they would be a decal that's affixed to the vehicle.
Is there, is there any reason why you need to identify the vehicle versus identifying the placard? It feels like it's a little bit more administrative work to try and track vehicles, because those are likely to change more often than people's residents, and being able to, you know, take the placard and have it transportable from vehicle to vehicle seems like simpler administratively for us.
I don't think that the decal-
Are you just trying to avoid the lost placard becoming an epidemic and there being a million of them out in the world?
I think we're worried not only about lost placards, but them as a commodity to be traded, you know, amongst people that are desiring to park within that area.
And I know- And I know in the small town where my house in Maine is, there's two decals that actually go on the vehicle. And that's not actually to park at or near your house. That's to be able to park either at the beach or to go to the dump. Because there is no, unless you hire a private company, there's no company that picks up trash there. And I think that, and the reason they do it is because, say, as an example, if I had some sort of a decal and I used to keep a car there years ago, if it wasn't a decal, then I could let anybody use that beach pass. And it was, and for them, it's a revenue generator because parking at the beach is expensive. So I'd rather see a decal on the vehicles. And then you only really have to worry about changing it if somebody replaces their vehicle or moves. And they're, because they're not easy, they're not easy to take off and then put back on another vehicle.
I guess I just lean towards trusting people to not abuse the program. That's all. I get along just fine with my state park placard. I don't hand it out to anybody. It just sits in my glove box until I need it.
Well, I guess, sorry. I mean, if they abuse it, you run the risk of we say, this isn't working anymore and we rescind the resolution, right? My mom lives in unincorporated Sacramento County and they have permit parking. And I texted her and asked how they do it. The way they do it is you get window placards, but it's only for cars that are registered to your house. So you have to show vehicle registration. And then you get two guest ones that are more like a handicap placard that you could trade through. So like she has the window thing on her car and she gave me one for my car. And then, you know, she gives her a thing. But, but they also, I kind of agree with Mike, too. On one hand, it's a lot of administrative work. So maybe it isn't, if you're going to do it where you have to register, it's only to a registered vehicle or something, maybe you only do it every two years. You don't have to do it every year because that creates a lot of work for you guys.
So having a one, having one permit and two guests. So potentially, if I have three vehicles, is that, does that, you know, could, I mean, and I'm speaking, you know, from people who may abuse it, but technically, if there's, how would you validate?
I would think you could do, you could do it as, for every vehicle that you have registered at your address. And, you know, I guess you could put a maximum on it if you're afraid somebody had a ton of vehicles, but.
During the pilot, the guest passes had an expiration date to them, right? They were written separately?
No.
Everything we issued, whether it was a decal or placard, had a six-month expiration date.
So Mark, so when these cities were, did you contact these cities and ask them if the administrative fee and, and say, you know, you know, sending, maybe if a cop goes out and gives tickets, is all that fee incorporated into the, you know, the average $25 cost?
Yeah, we did not have a great deal of dialogue with any of these. Strictly what we could find, you know, in their various codes and ordinances.
Well, just to try and focus this a little bit, I think that per address, having, you know, two permits is adequate as a starting point, and then we can reevaluate it as time goes by. And a fee of, you know, somewhere between $25 and $50 annually per resident pass seems like a reasonable trade-off and will help to defray some of those administrative costs. Probably not all, but.
Yeah, $25 is too low to me. You know, I would have thought it would have been more in the, you know, higher $50 range.
I just, I don't want to create administrative work that's unnecessary is my only point for asking the other questions.
So the data that you're talking about right here, though, that will go in the resolution, not in the ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I'm hearing the council generally seems comfortable with two permits per address?
So, but two permits per address, but each permit will cost $25?
Well, just taking it one step at a time, we start with, you know, the number of permits per address.
I think I'm hearing two permits per address.
No additional guest permits?
We haven't gotten to that yet.
And you're right, that might refine your answer if, depending on how you decide to rule on guest permits.
And I think, Mark, maybe what, with regard to the cost per permit, this list averages 25, but if you could come up with some sort of an estimate as to what you think the administration of that's going to be, so we could, you know, make sure that we're getting our costs covered, you know. So maybe it's $35. Maybe it's not 50, but maybe it's 35.
That's, there's so many variables associated with it.
Plus, you looked at these numbers over a year ago, so it may well be that they haven't been raised in quite a while.
It could be. My recommendation would be that whatever we agree with here tonight is just a good starting point. We can report back to you after the first year and we'll have concrete information about what the program cost and the number of permits that were issued. And it's an opportunity, because it's handled through resolution, not ordinance, you know, you can make modifications at that time. And then we can evolve this program, you know, year after year.
So just a clarification, if we're going with two per address, then there's no verification that they have two vehicles registered to their address? You could have one vehicle and you get two permits. Is that what we're saying? Okay.
But then you gotta have a vehicle to put the.
Why don't, why don't we just make it $25 per permit? So if I have two vehicles, I'm paying for two permits. I think that's.
That's what I was suggesting.
You're still trying to cover your third car.
But I'm asking if you, if you have to prove, to give verification that you have two vehicles registered at your address. If you don't, and it's just a blanket, two passes per house, whatever, residence. I find that, I just want to clarify.
Perhaps you could set a minimum and a maximum number of permits per address so that people do have a certain amount of flexibility. There are several people that I would imagine do have, you know, adult children or multi-generational homes where they might have more cars than two permits will cover.
But that gets me back to Sarah's point that, well, at least with your mom's car, that those vehicles, if they're going to go over two, all the vehicles have to be registered at that house. Like I can see where there might be a house down there that, you know, there is, there's four drivers and all four of them have jobs and, you know, where are the other two people going to park? But we need to make sure that if they want to go over two, all those vehicles have to be registered at that address.
That just seems like a lot of work for the city's park.
There's people like you with three cars that want to park down there.
To be validating.
No, they just have to bring the registration in.
Yeah, because we did, as part of the pilot, we did interact personally with the residents. They had to bring proof of address, so, you know, just adding, having them bring a little bit more paperwork with them.
I'm not adverse to more passes if there's, more permits if there's registered vehicles.
If, as long as it's registered vehicles.
So just to be clear, it is, it would be the whatever cost, whatever price we decide, per permit, correct? Okay, yeah.
So do we now move on to guest passes?
What, before we do, do we have a feel for what cost per permit we're comfortable with? Is it 25? Is it 40, 50?
If you think we can do it for 25, I would start at 25 and then, but I'd really appreciate it if, you know, on time sheets, you get your staff to be, or whoever's going to do this, your staff, whoever's staff, keep track of how much time they're having to spend on this.
May I suggest?
So we know the actual cost.
May I suggest we actually perhaps start with a higher permit rate fee? And then that way, after the first year, we find that we did not have.
I'm happy at 35.
I'm throwing out 50.
I'm going to, I would support 50. I think that we're going to find in a year's time, I think we're going to find that it's very costly. But to go from 25 or 30 to 50 is going to be tough on residents as opposed to going from 50 to maybe that's what we charge. And then at some point, any excess we put into a fund that starts to take care of the parking problems in the historic district.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not adverse to 50, you know, in part because what we're doing is limiting the general public's ability to park in that neighborhood on whatever public streets.
I agree.
Question for the city attorney. If we establish a fee for something like this, are we opening ourselves up to needing to do a 209 notice if we go to raise it?
No, sir. This is not a property-related fee.
Okay, thank you.
It's vehicle-related. And as the mayor knows, and I think she alluded to, we can only charge the amount of the fee that reflects the reasonable cost of providing a service, which we staff will evaluate and report back to the council.
Just for clarification, the $50 one time, that's it, not every year?
No, yearly.
That's a lot of money for four cars, $200 in front of their house.
So just keep in mind, this is how I see it, YK, that this is, this is public property. This is, you know, taxpayers basically own this land. And so now we are limiting people from making use of that. So there should be some form of cost to individuals.
No, I hear, I hear you.
That's where I'm waiting for the guest, guest one. That's where we can jack up.
And this is especially true because there are people that have driveways and garages that don't necessarily have to park on the street. But if you're living in the historic district and you don't have a driveway or garage where you're parking a car and you're parking on the street, that's a lot of vehicles to park on the street. And that's four vehicles from the general public that don't live there that otherwise would have been able to park on that street.
Yeah, it's the expectation of parking availability in front of your home. It's not a, it's not a right. It's not a guaranteed privilege. And, and so, you know, yes, it is something every property owner is going to have to weigh and evaluate.
So the, the actual administration of the permit is largely taken up by the issuance process, right? So I think, I think the $50 is probably appropriate, but I think that we could actually consider having these things be valid for at least two years and renewable at that term. Because then it's effectively 25 a year, which is a little more easy to swallow as a beginning point. And after that first year, unless somebody moves or gets a different car, we're not really doing anything at that point.
I would say annually. That's just my thought.
Okay, I need to, I need three people to decide on annually or every two years.
I vote for 50 every two years because I, it's, it's less work for you guys.
Mike?
Same.
I heard that.
Okay. There you go.
All righty. Guest passes.
Yeah, coming. Is any of these were already bounced by the group?
Well, I did have a dialogue with Mike Reynolds as president of HAFRA. So he's dialed in on, you know, this discussion. But we're waiting on the outcome of the discussion to go back and have a community meeting. And hopefully, you know, we'll come up with something that is acceptable to the residents. If we do have any feedback from them, I will share that back to the council before we finalize the resolution.
Thank you. That helps.
Okay, so guest visitor permits, not every program that we assessed even considered guest permits. And every one of them has their own unique situations. You'll see there's a lot of waterfront communities, like the mayor had mentioned in her example. And there's, there's other communities that just have situations more similar to what we're dealing with, where you have the encroachment of commercial or business parking into a residential area. So again, you'll, you'll see that there's a wide, wide range of costs and numbers of passes. It averaged out to $24 per guest pass. But again, this is a very scattered sample here. You'll note, like, say, look at the Palo Alto example. They'll, they'll allow up to 50-day passes at $5 each, whereas others just assign one guest pass per address. So just as a starting point, one possible suggestion that we could run by the residents would be to start with one guest placard per address or two, if that's what you desire.
I would go with two.
And then in the instance of, say, a person having a large party, you know, one-off, you know, New Year's Eve party or whatever you like, we could potentially also offer one-day passes that the city could issue. It'd just be a paper pass that is only good for that particular day or weekend and give them a maximum number of those per year so that, again, it doesn't become an administrative nightmare for my staff. But those are two different versions of guest passes that we could consider.
I would suggest going with two per and see what the residents have to say.
So here are my thoughts. I don't support guest passes. I think it goes back to public property. We heard them. We, we put a time, we put a time restraint for them to have access to parking in front of their homes because of the, you know, there were peak times that were, that made it difficult for them. So we're taking parking away from people that would support the historic district. And now we don't, now that's not available to the public. But yet we're allowing now extra cars to come into the district through guest passes. And so to me, it just sort of contradicts the purpose of making spaces available for residents. Guest passes to me, just if somebody has a guest, they can, you know, we do have the garage. We do have, you know, other areas that they can park in. But I think this is being overly generous for a problem that we were trying to solve that said we want to reduce the parking in this specific area. And it really is one major intersection that was the problem that would, that we made all these changes to. And so I don't support guest passes.
I think we should at least have the discussion with the residents at this meeting. We're not making the final decision tonight, but I'd like, Mark, to go back with the option for two guest passes, maybe at $25 a year, and see what happens with the meeting at the residents. Because I think what we're going to get back from them is what that means. I can't have a dinner party or I can't, you know, my kids can't come and visit me, you know, on a Friday or on a weekend when there's a peddler's field. That's what I'm thinking the response is going to be. So let's, you know, let's give Mark the opportunity to at least meet with the residents and see what they have to say about it. They may say we don't care about guest passes. I don't think that's what they're going to do, but it could happen. Anybody else feel strongly about that?
Well, I mean, if, if the time of day was, let's say, during the day where you have a nanny coming to your house or you had, you know, somebody like that who was coming to work at your house and you wanted a place for them to park every single day, then I, then I could see a guest pass. Because it's 6:00 to 10:00 PM, I somewhat agree with Rosario, but, and it's, they're getting something better than they have right now. I mean, right now, if they have a party, people are parking a couple of blocks away. That is a function of living in the historic district, right? Just like when somebody comes to my house for a party, not everybody can park in the cul-de-sac. You got to park, you know, a couple streets away. Yeah. So, but, you know, so.
No, mine is, my house is the same situation. There's nowhere to park at my house because it's, because of where you and I both are in cul-de-sacs.
So I would say maybe one, one guest pass I'd be okay with, but beyond that, I don't think so.
Mike?
I was just going to suggest that for special, for some types of special events at SacState, they have an online tool where you can print your own guest pass after paying for it. So that might be a way to enable the residents to have control over actually creating the guest pass so that we reduce our administrative costs. They'd have to identify maybe the permit that they already have and be able to print one out that's good for a day so that we simplify that process if we go forward with guest passes. And I'm, I'm inclined to be somewhat liberal to these residents, so.
I know. I incline to give at least one for them. At least, you know, somebody is coming, but I hear her as well. You're going to take it back to the residents. Let's hear from them. I really, really want to hear from them, what they want to say.
Okay, so you should, you should go back to the residents and say, the council recommended from zero to unlimited, but printable online.
I don't think that's what I said.
I was going to go back to the residents with the council recommended one guest pass per address and the possibility of printable guest passes online.
For a fee?
For a fee, yeah. Did that sound about right?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. This one should be fairly straightforward. This is actually a staff recommendation that I'm kind of watering down after some thought. some thought. You'll see that of some, about a third of the programs we looked at actually have an approval threshold. So this is geared towards assuring that it's not a vocal minority that is driving this demand for permit parking within the defined boundary, that, that you're going to attempt to poll all the affected residents and, and owners in that area to determine if you have a simple majority or, or a significant majority, whatever, you know.
How did Mountain View get to eighty percent?
Yeah, that's, you know, it's, it's pretty steep, I think they're, they're-
Are you talking about approving this program or making changes to it?
Specific, the specific area or neighborhood in question, so not, not the ordinance per se, but, you know, let's say another neighborhood in the historic district were to come forward and say, we would like permits as well, but we're not sure if it has the same mandate that this neighborhood seems to have. You know, would we move forward and just establish the zone? Or would we make some attempt to at least gauge the actual buy-in from the community?
But Mark, this, this says cost per permit.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's, that's a bad, that's a typo, sorry about that.
I'm gonna throw out, I think it-
It should be approval threshold.
I think it should be somewhere between two-thirds and three-quarters.
I would go with two-thirds, cause that's more in line with-
The reason I backed off on it a little bit is because I was surprised that not every program required this. You know, I went into this thinking of this as more of, of an assessment, but as we just discussed earlier and as, as dialogue we had at the Historic District Commission, it's not, it's a voluntary program. We're, we're exercising our right as a city to restrict parking on a public street, but then giving people with a specific criteria the opportunity to have an exemption to that, so, so it doesn't affect everybody equally, people get to choose to buy into the program. However, if, if we do wanna gauge whether or not the, the whole community, affected community is, is interested in this, we could look at a two-thirds majority.
I, I think personally, I agree with Sarah, I think it should be two-thirds, because I don't wanna have half of the people super happy and half of the people super mad.
Two-thirds sounds good.
Speaking of typos, I should also point out that in the ordinance that was attached to the staff report, there are actually some parentheses in there that will not be in the final ordinance. The sentence reads the way it's supposed to read, is, which is that the council will determine the days and times by resolution for the, that the permits will be in effect. So we'll just, we'll remove the parentheses, my apologies for those being in the draft.
Any other questions of Mark?
I, I do, I have kind of a comment. So the first map that you put up, we look like we're considering expanding the boundaries, right? I, I brought this up last time in that, you know, partway through the pilot, we issued parking permits to people who lived on Sutter Street who wanted them. Their street is not subject to the proposed boundaries of the permit parking program. And I think we have to, we have to set some rules, because otherwise, you know, any of those streets, somebody comes around the corner and says, well, you know, I live on the corner of, of, I live on Mormon, just around the corner from Reading Street, and I parked there, or my guests parked there, whatever. So I, I think there needs to be, if you live on the street that is subject to permit parking, you can buy the permit, but if you don't, you don't, you can't.
Was that a question? I mean, it's, yeah, there has to be a boundary, there has to be a boundary.
I would agree with that, and my only other, my only other comment would be that, you know, my concern was, as I mentioned a long time ago, the lofts over by the bank, and that, what is there, one other resident on Sutter Street that's up at the next block? And given that's a relatively small number of people, I don't understand why we're not opting those guys in.
That, that's exactly my point, Carrie. I'm saying those people should not, on Sutter Street should not get it. Their street is not subject to this parking permit, and if we let them have it, then what's to prevent somebody, again, from around the corner saying, hey, I live on Mormon, and, you know, right, right around the corner from where there's permit parking, and you're taking away my guest parking, or whatever, where my people have always parked, or I've always parked. If we're, you know, if we're gonna limit it, we have to, there has to be some parameters.
You know, Mark, I know this, I know the district very intimately, I know it very well. I've been, I've, I've had a business in the district now for six and a half years. And when I look at this map, I, I know the intersections that are the problem, that have, that are, that basically during peaked times, they get a little congested. And so when I look at Reading, Reading and Decatur and Wool, those areas don't get congested during that timeframe. So, and I know that it, they were included in this, in, in this program, but it seems that we've created a problem for that part of the district that really wasn't a problem. I, I don't know, did you hear, I mean, I, I'm not sure, I can't recall now, did we talk to those residents where they're like, yeah, sure, go ahead and create it, or was it nonchalant, or was it, yep, we have a problem, go ahead and include us into the program? Because I think right now, as I'm looking at this, it, it's, we, the, the problem wasn't on the Wool, Decatur, Reading Street. So, I, so it, it just seems to me that we, we, we now are creating a problem for an area that really doesn't have that impact. And I know it because I, I, I worked down there. But I, I saw someone raise their hand, I'm not sure if that's-
This, this map is supposed to indicate that the, the solid line is the pilot area, and the dash lines are potential expansions.
Yeah, there are areas that the Residents Association has indicated may have interest in expanding the, the boundary.
This, this is a spot where the vice mayor has probably got this right. Go, go, you can, you have to draw a line someplace, and, and the fullness of those dash lines is probably too far for dealing with the initial problem statement that we had. I'm actually kinda surprised that the folks on, on Sutter between Bridge and Scott didn't ask to be included specifically, but nonetheless, I think the, the, the original boundary is good, the, the like half-step I might take is incorporating the half block up to the, up to the alley along Wool and along Scott Street, but not all the way to Mormon.
Okay.
Anyway, just for the sake of commenting on it.
And my point, Sarah, was that I thought that the folks that have a Sutter Street address should be allowed to be included in the, in the parking.
I don't think so either.
I, I understand that, but my point is, okay, well then somebody else who is not, not subject to permit parking on their street, why, why wouldn't they be able to get one? Where would it end?
Yeah, with the exception of the one person that lives, you know, not in the, the lofts, that, that's a lifestyle choice to live on Sutter Street right there, and they made it. I, I don't mean to be, you know, overly cruel to them in terms of how many vehicles they get to have, but there's plenty of parking opportunities within a short walk of, of those particular residences.
Okay, I'll let it go. Any other questions of Mark before I open it up to the public?
I'll listen from public.
Mr. Holderness, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you to all the Boy Scouts for being here tonight.
Yeah. Thank you, Scouts.
We look forward to seeing you at your Eagle Scout.
Mayor, I just wanted to basically ask a question of your Public Works Director. Are you actually contemplating that Decatur Street between Figaroa and Sutter and Wool Street between Figaroa would be part of this program? I don't, I don't understand why that is, if you drive up and down those two streets between Figaroa and Sutter, they're part of the commercial area.
I think there might be one house there.
Okay, so you do one house.
No, because, no, and, but I, I know what you're talking about, cause I was just thinking about that, Rosario mentioned it. If you drive down, once you cross Figaroa, I think there's only one house, and I don't even think it's on Decatur, it's backyard, it's the house with the pool right next to the parking above Fat Rabbit.
Exactly what I was gonna say, there is one house there, I give you that. And there, the old Southwest Traders Building, they've remodeled it, I think there's residential above, but I don't know if downstairs is residential now, it used to be commercial.
No, and, and so there's basically that, except for that one house-
Yeah.
That's the side of, it, it's the side of the bank building where REY is located, and the other side of the street is Fat Rabbit.
Yeah, no, I, I know what you mean, but my point is, that doesn't seem that's be a place where you would put restricted parking to protect neighbors and residents, cause there really aren't, it's in minimus, but just, just my thought. That's all I got, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mark, you got everything you need to go back to the residents? Oh, sorry, I didn't have a card for him. Sorry, Mike, come on up. Krista was hiding it.
Mayor Howell, Council. So I'll see if I can be the, the knowledge repository, so I'll hit the things I can remember. So the original boundary that's shown in the, in the solid orange line came out of the Kimley Horn Report. That was how we decided the start point, so just so you want, it wasn't a matter of, you know, the obvious situation of the six-hundred block and stuff, those are all from Kimley Horn. Let's see, clarification, the problem statement, when we went along in the way, the original goal was to try and do the balloon squeeze. Could we move people out of the neighborhoods and into the garage? Obviously, the data has been a little opaque as to whether we were successful in that. And so when we talked about expanding the boundaries, it was, would we create the halo that would force people to, you know, that they wouldn't drive any further, or park any further away, would seek elsewhere? The opposite side of it is, you know, because this was a pilot to collect data, the idea of potentially constricting could also be there if we abandoned the original problem statement of moving them to the garage. And so there could be an element of that far western end where we decide, you know, maybe there is not enough congestion there, and the residents come and say, we don't care, and so maybe you constrict the boundary of it. I mean, I think all those are potentially possible. And then maybe the last thing, you know, I heard the back and forth about the permits and the guest stuff, the original concept was typical dinner party, you might invite four couples, ten, I sort of use myself as a proxy for that. And if you've already vacated the street with no parking, the street is in fact empty, so the number of guest permits you give for those hours is somewhat irrelevant because you're no longer constrained, right? So now you can choose to charge for them, but the fact of limiting them doesn't really do anything to change the dynamics of your parking situation. So that's all. And I'll answer questions, but otherwise, those are my comments.
Thanks, Mike.
So that brings me to a, a question, Mark. If I recall correctly, the garage did not see an increase of usage during this timeframe.
Yeah, it, we definitely did-
Which was one of the surprises.
Yeah, we definitely did not see an increase in parking in the garage. In fact, we didn't see that in the, the light rail lots either, it was a bit of a mystery where all those cars went.
They were in Carmel that weekend. So, Mark, do you have all the direction you need to go back to the residents?
I do, and thank you very much for, for the dialogue and, and debate. I, I think I have clear direction to take back to the residents, and, and we'll get back to you with their feedback, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, Mark, just to be clear, are, are you gonna, are you gonna talk to residents in, on the Wool, Decatur, Reading areas to see if it was, if this is something that they're interested in doing? Or how do we validate that there's actually a problem there? Because, again, I, I know the area well, and there's, that, that area does not have a problem on Friday and Saturday nights. You can, you can find parking. If I wanted to find parking, you can find parking, but it didn't have the problems that the Scott and Figaroa corner had. So how do, I mean, I, I guess where I'm at right now is, how do we exclude an area that isn't a part of the problem, that is only now creating a problem for people that live in the area?
I've been invited to attend the Residents Association meeting on September 12th, I believe, and at, at that meeting that we are going to present these recommendations, it's my understanding that the Residents Association is gonna broadly reach out to all of the residents and make them aware that if, if they want to participate, this is the opportunity to come and have your voice heard.
But isn't this a situation where, don't we need to quantify that there's actually a problem, as opposed to, I want this to be my private parking versus we have a problem that we need to fix? What are we doing to differentiate those two?
Well, we can rely on the data collection that Kimley Horn did during the pilot to see if it indicates that there's been an increase in parking demand on any of those streets. If you may recall, the data that we collected on those three separate dates did not really show a marked increase in, in parking utilization on those blocks. But, you know, if it does show even a modest increase, you know, maybe we can take that as a sign that if, if they're willing to participate in the program, willing to pay a permit fee, then, you know, then we can include them.
Okay.
Mr. Wong, I have a question for you. Given that we, we haven't really done anything yet, and Mark's gonna go back to the residents, are we really actually conducting the first reading of this ordinance? Because we know it's coming back, and if there's a change, we have to redo the first reading. So aren't we more in a situation where we're providing guidance to staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you are absolutely correct in asking that question. That is why the ordinance presented to you from Public Works is a very flexible ordinance that allows the council to set a very big framework, but deal with the details with a, a subsequent accompanying resolution that Mark will present to you after talking with the residents. This ordinance basically just creates the framework, not having the details such as the date and time.
It just seems to me kinda-
Even the boundary of the district.
Okay.
It authorized the council to establish the district boundaries through resolution later on.
Which could also change based on-
Correct. It's a flexible ordinance for you, for the council.
That's, that's like an ordinance written in rubber.
So that the council may have flexibility after hearing from the residents.
Establishing an actual program in any given neighborhood remains the purview of the council. It can't be elect, it can't be enacted just by a simple vote of the neighborhood.
Oh, no, no, this is totally the council's prerogative.
I just wanted to make sure that that remained the same.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that I, I really think this is bordering on silly, cause we know we're gonna have to do it again.
Through resolution.
So if, if somebody, if somebody wants to, anybody wanna move first reading and introduction of ordinance thirteen thirty-one?
I'll move it.
Second.
We have motion in a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Cherla?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. Okay. Go forth and meet with the residents. So that moves us to our next item, which is old business, and this is a review of the proclamation of the COVID local emergency order.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Wong's gonna help me out with the PowerPoint here, but I'm bringing this item to you tonight at the request of a consensus of the city council to revisit the city council's proclamation of local emergency due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And you can go to the next slide, Steve. As the council will remember, the city council adopted a resolution declaring a state of emergency almost two and a half years ago, which is frankly, all kind of a blur right now, on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, and this was just as the COVID nineteen pandemic was just beginning to take hold locally, regionally, nationally, and worldwide. At the time the council took the action, the governor had declared a state of public health emergency twelve days, days earlier, and the county public health officer had declared a public health emergency about eleven days earlier. As your city manager and your emergency service, services director, I recommended this council action as community spread of the virus had become evident, there was no vaccine or treatment available, cases were escalating, and we could already see a strain on city staff and resources, as well as a high degree of economic risk for our businesses and a health risk for our residents. In declaring a state of emergency, we sought to be sure that the city was mobilized to receive available funding and res- to receive available funding and resources, and also take emergency actions and procure emergency supplies as needed. And I executed a series of emergency orders in my role, and you ratified each of those at subsequent city council meetings. So the first one was DES 01-20. It focused on preventing large gatherings, more than 10. It also placed nonessential permanent employees on leave through March 31st. It waived rental payments for lease of our city facilities through May 31st, 2020. And we made some modifications to our contract with the Sacramento SPCA. Next slide. Next executed DES 02-20 on April 1st, 2020. And that order said that many city facilities were closed until further notice. We told the nonessential employees to continue to stay home, and we implemented an emergency leave benefit for city employees that I'll talk a bit more about later. DES 03-20 was executed by me on April 10th, 2020. And this suspended a portion of our Folsom municipal code pertaining to the 72-hour parking limitations on RVs on city streets from April 8th, 2020 until further notice for first responders so they could use RVs as a place to perhaps quarantine from their families. The order also said that non-public safety city employees should maintain at least a six-foot social distance while at work. And it strongly recommended that city employees wear face coverings as they went about engaging in essential activities outside the workplace. And finally, the order said that visitors to city facilities were strongly encouraged to wear face coverings. You can kind of see the acceleration through these orders as the pandemic took hold. Next slide. I executed DES 04-20, which reopened many city facilities under certain conditions. It suspended the Folsom Municipal Code restrictions regarding the number and frequency that you can hold garage sales within the city limits. It stipulated that fees for home occupation businesses would be suspended until termination of the local emergency. It said that city-owned, non-ADA public parking spaces and certain city-owned public properties could be used for restaurants and essential businesses for dining and retail uses. We asked, we increased the local contract preferences from 5% to 25%. And wherever feasible, we asked that public works activities occurring in the public right-of-way be performed outside of normal business hours to make things as easy as possible for our struggling businesses. The provisions in the code limiting temporary signage, for example, like A-frame signs, window signs, or banners, were suspended until termination of the local emergency. And finally, we suspended provisions of the code that restricted the hours of delivery of goods and supplies to businesses, again, to make it as easy as possible for them to survive during this tough time. Next slide, please, Steve. Emergency Order 05-20. This order said that all nonessential permanent city employees directed to stay at home were now to come back to their full-time work schedule effective July 1st, 2020. We implemented a COVID-19 pre-screening protocol that employees and visitors or contractors had to put through, to put themselves through to screen their health before coming onto, into a city facility. And it required city employees and contractors to wear face coverings. Let's see. And then DES 06-20 basically said that in order to protect public safety and property safety, that we were allowed to temporarily abate homeless encampments following very careful protection of those individuals' property in order to prevent wildfire in specific designated open spaces. And then finally, the last emergency order related to COVID-19 was DES 07-20. That was executed on August 5th, 2021. And that order said that the temporary waiver of rental payments was suspended until August 31st, and that lease payments would resume on September 1st, 2021. So, next slide. At least for me, it was kind of a fascinating walk through the strange history of the last two years as I went through these orders. We fast forward to today, and a lot has changed for the better in terms of the pandemic. Thankfully, COVID-19 vaccines, boosters, treatments, and testing are now widely available. All city employees have returned to work. All city recreational facilities have reopened. Through the hard work and dedication of hundreds of city employees, Folsom City Hall was never closed to the public. It remained open throughout the pandemic. Major school districts, including Folsom-Cordova, have returned to in-person learning. Restaurants, gyms, and other businesses have generally returned to normal operations. Masking is no longer required in most settings. City council and commission meetings continue to be in person. The COVID-19 positivity rate is still high, but very fortunately, the hospitalization and death rates are both low, and our regional hospitals have plenty of capacity. Next slide. In terms of financial considerations, if you were to think about rescinding the state of local emergency at this time, we're not aware of any pending city financial reimbursement claims that are directly tied to Folsom's current state of emergency declaration. It remains to be seen if there's, there are some dollars that could rain down upon us in the future that would require a state of local emergency, but we're not aware of any right now. There are termination or continuation of components of various emergency orders could have financial consequences, and we are happy to research those and review them further in detail if directed by the council. Employment considerations, I did feel it was important to point out that one of the consequences of rescinding the state of local emergency would affect, would be to affect the emergency leave benefit that I mentioned earlier for our employees. This allows non-public safety permanent employees to utilize a bank of hours separate from their personal leave banks to be out of work due to a COVID-19-related reason, to care for themselves, care for a family member, or care for a child impacted by COVID-related childcare closures. Our public safety employees receive similar benefits, but only for childcare leave. This leave option not only met the federal requirements and meets the ongoing state requirements, but also helps ease employees' economic stress caused by the pandemic. Upon expiration of the federal COVID leave laws in 2020 and amid the national surges of COVID variants in early '21 and '22, California implemented COVID-19 sick leave laws both, in both of those years, each expiring September 30th of '21 and '22. Under these laws, employees receive paid time off to care for themselves, care for a family member, or care for a child impacted by COVID. However, employees are not required to pay more than $511 a day or $5,110 in the aggregate to an employee. The city's emergency leave benefit does not place a cap on daily allowances, and termination of the state of emergency would end the emergency leave benefit for all employee groups, public and non-public safety, and align the city with the California COVID sick leave laws. So after that point, basically, our employees would just use their regular leave banks for any COVID-related reason. And then I wanted to just give you a scan of other jurisdictions. California's state of emergency still remains in effect. Sacramento County's emergency proclamation remains in effect as well. I did survey my fellow city managers in the county. Everybody else still has their local state of emergency in effect for their city. And I got the same answer from all the city, pretty much all the city managers, saying that they were waiting for the county to undo their state of emergency, which we believe the county would be triggered by whatever the state did before they undid their local order. And of course, our order still remains in effect. And then finally, I really just wanna kind of open it up to council discussion in any direction you wanna provide to us. Key questions that I've put up here that you might wanna consider is, does the city council wish to provide direction to bring back items to? First, rescind Folsom's declaration of local emergency? And if you do, are there any specific elements of any of the emergency orders that correlate with that declaration of emergency that you would like to direct staff to try to achieve through other means like codification, or, you know, come back to you another time and suggest how we could do it outside of a state of emergency?
Okay, I'll start, because it still exists in the county, and that is somewhat dependent on what the state does. So my recommendation at the moment, excuse me, would be to leave Resolution 10408 in place for now. That one, well, I'm looking at the attachments in, on page 771 of the staff report for item 24. So that would eliminate DES 0120, which is Resolution 10409. Eliminate 104, or rescind 10411, which was DES 02-20 in your presentation, Elaine. The same for 10422, which was DES 03-20.
The ones you would rescind?
Yes.
Okay.
All three of those rescind.
Yeah, yeah.
The 10433, which is DES 0420, includes the outdoor dining, so we'd need to keep that in some way, shape, or form. I believe that 10485, DES 05-20, can go away. I think we need to take another look at 10600, DES 06-20. That was the camping in open spaces because of the fire hazard. So I think we should find a way to keep that in place. And then rescind the last one, 10678, which was DES 07-20.
I am personally okay rescinding all of them, with the exception of us being able to look into the open space camp that was, that really, that almost eliminated any fires that were taking place in the open space.
You wanna eliminate outdoor dining?
Well, the outdoor dining, I mean, there isn't, I don't think anyone really right now has outdoor dining that's not already identified as.
But it's on public property.
Okay, and then that one, I guess. I mean, I mean, I mean, it feels, you know, because there are several businesses in the area that still have it. But, so if we rescind it, what do we do? Take down all the parklets?
So that's part of, if, for example, you're interested in businesses being able to continue to use public property for that purpose, we could come back with, you know, what would be the legislative means to achieve that.
And frankly, that might be something you might wanna think about recusing yourself from.
Yeah, because I do benefit from it.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just seeking kind of general direction of the elements that you would wanna preserve, if any.
Well, if I could just reiterate, then what I was gonna say is, I'm okay rescinding all of them, with the exception of the open space that was, that basically eliminated the fire.
Yeah, and the, the one with the outdoor dining.
Yeah, which I won't comment on.
Just a point of clarification, the leave bank that you were describing, that's set to end at the end of September anyway?
Correct. Allison Garcia can help me out if I'm getting this incorrect, but it expires on its own on September 30th of this year.
My personal feeling is it should have expired a year ago, but.
We, we felt it was really important to offer it to our employees, and there were some points where we were drawing close to ending it, and then the pandemic would surge again, and our employees were really struggling with, you know, their children getting sick, you know, the school situations being iffy, and so we just kept it in place. Sounds fair.
Elaine, I think, but all the county, state, nearby cities, they're still keeping all the emergencies at this point.
The county is in place, the state is in place, and I did not survey outside of our county, but I did ask all the city managers within our county, and they all said, we're keeping it.
Yeah.
The Galt city manager commented at one point that he thought he might be bringing an item in the fall to rescind it, but has not done that yet. Everybody else has said, nope, we're waiting till the county undoes theirs.
Right. My thought is here, I know, thank you for bringing all this. Thank you, Councilwoman Sarah, for asking this one as well. We'd rather put some pressure on our county supervisors, and that way, you know, get that for, that's where I am.
But it doesn't matter what the county does. It doesn't make ours go away. We would still have to do this anyway.
This is our own separate action, but if you're also interested in advocacy to the county to have them undo theirs.
This is also pressure on the county to consider undoing theirs. If everybody else starts getting rid of them.
And I think you have to keep in mind that, with regard to what else is happening in the region, the city of Sacramento has only gone back to in-person meetings in the last month.
Yeah.
And for the most part, the county has been, the Sacramento County has been doing the same thing. They've been doing most of their meetings remotely. Regional SAN has been, has been meeting remotely for two years. RT's been meeting remotely for two years. And part of that has to do with the fact that Regional SAN, as an example, there are 17 board members. So you can't, there's no way to social distance. The city of Sacramento, their council chambers is the way it's set up. They couldn't social distance. The RT boardroom, no way to social distance there. So we are just lucky to have a configuration that we could work with, because we were the first ones. We've been back for two years.
Yeah, thank you. My understanding, though, in general, except that open space, most of them are due, as a city manager, to us, are passing down from state to county, county to cities. Correct me if I am wrong, except the open space, which we brought in, that's nothing to do with COVID, in my opinion.
These were all pandemic-related, but they were not just handed down. They were specific recommendations that were customized to our city and our city's response. Like, they pertain specifically to our facilities, to our employees' decisions that we felt were the right decisions for our city. They weren't just mandates handed down, in all cases.
In all cases.
Not in all cases, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. It helps me, because.
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's how I felt it, right? It's passed down most of the times, and when there is a county one, and several times, I do remember those in peak time. I'm waiting for, not you, this city is waiting for county's direction. That's how I heard it quite a bit of times. And all these ordinance decisions are coming from that push.
Yes, and could I ask the city attorney to clarify? We also declared a state of wildfire emergency, and I don't wanna confuse the two. That was a separate, that was a separate action to this particular emergency order that we're referring to.
That is correct.
So we could let this one lapse?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. So I'll go ahead and answer. Yes, I want to rescind Folsom's declaration of local emergency. That's why I asked for it. I understand, I agree with.
Which ordinance are you talking about, Sarah?
Well, all of them, except for, I agree that we wanna take up consideration for the outdoor dining, because that is one of the silver linings to come from the pandemic. And then the other one I wanna have come before us so that we can abolish entirely is, I don't think we need to restrict the number of garage sales that people have in the city anymore, as I mentioned before. Nobody, you know, nobody's having six garage sales or garage sales every weekend.
Out of control.
Got it.
So those two things, parklets and that. I will say, Foster County has rescinded theirs, City of Roseville has rescinded theirs, Kasuma CSD has rescinded theirs. So there are out there, and I agree with Mike that this does put pressure on Sacramento County. I just don't think when we have all of our facilities open, when we've been meeting since June 2020 in person, we no longer have a remote call-in option for residents that we couldn't, in good conscience, continue a state of emergency.
And the only reason why I wanted to keep the first one in place, Sarah, was just in case there's another, I don't know, something could happen again. Not that I'm trying to will this on us, but, you know, say it was, you know, an outbreak of monkeypox or something. I was just trying to save us from having to go through this process again.
I don't want, the only two I wanna do is garage sales and outdoor dining.
Thank you, Councilmember Aquino. And I did, I did just wanna say that, you know, as we, just as we did with this emergency, we can be nimble if something else were to happen, you know, we can very, very.
We have practiced.
We have practiced this, yeah.
So you wanna make a permanent change to the city ordinances to deal with the garage sales and deal with the parklets?
Yes.
And you wanna rescind everything else, including the related to wildfire?
Wildfire, open space?
Well, mainly because the city attorney says we have a separate one that continues to allow us.
But does that?
That is not a.
Well, I know, but that was one of the ones that she listed, so just for clarity.
It's a separate one.
That one was related, it was related to the COVID-19 pandemic because there was a, an order said that we could not abate homeless encampments, and so this was an emergency order that said, for purposes of, you know, preserving life and safety, we can abate under certain circumstances. But we have a separate.
But does that one, does the other ordinance allow us to abate homeless encampments in open space along trails that are in a high-fire danger?
The other ordinance is completely unrelated to COVID-19, and it basically says that, you know, no humans should be in our open space areas and because humans cause wildfires.
Right.
So that is, that is not what we're talking about tonight. That one is still intact.
Okay. As long as it covers us for that. As long as it covers us for that.
I concur with Mrs. Riquino.
And I would say, I know our staff has a lot on their plate, but I'd like this to come back at the next meeting. I don't want to say now and then rescind this in November.
Can I make a suggestion that just for the purposes of that employee benefit item, that the date of rescission match up with the end of that program?
Yeah.
So September 30th?
That makes sense. Allison, does that make sense? Okay.
We can still vote on it next meeting, but just.
So I heard at least two of you who.
I spoke.
Okay, okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, yeah.
But one more thing though, I know in between, Sarah mentioned, that's why we terminated the remote joining for these meetings. I don't think so any of those are that.
I think that.
It was part of the original order, I believe. But that's.
I'm just saying to me, that is a reason that we cannot keep an emergency order going. We put that in place to, because of the pandemic and, and we've taken that away. And so it doesn't seem like we can keep an emergency order when that, it just seems disingenuous.
Yeah, no, when I saw that yellow highlights on our agenda, it's a big thing for me. I'd rather want to keep those ones, but we can talk that, you know, again, in another subject.
But I think that what Elaine's been told is that there's at least three of us do not, that do not want to have the remote meeting option. We haven't had it for, what, a month and a half now?
Sounds about right. We are, I will share that we have offered it as an ADA accommodation and we'll continue to do that.
Yep, okay. Anyway, I did some research, but entire region, they are allowing the remote login. You know, honestly speaking, yes, we love to see them here, but people are now adopted. I just want to make that comment here. Again, it's not that, you know, I may be minority.
I agree with you. I think that technology, you know, maybe, maybe the one we were using wasn't beneficial, but there are maybe other ones. And I like the idea of giving people the option to remote in. But if we don't, I mean, if you say, let's get rid of it, then that's what it is. But I really do support using technology to allow people to engage in our process.
Good. That's outside though, I know, I got it.
Kind of a different, yeah, I understand.
I got it. And for this one, if that's what the parklet, keep it and garage sale, I know. I'm good with that as well.
Okay, so we will return with those related staff items and move this to, you know, as quickly as possible to the next meeting. Is there anything we're forgetting for tonight, Mr. City Attorney?
No, thank you, Madam City Manager. I just wanted to clarify, so the instruction to staff is to bring item or items back at the next council meeting to rescind the COVID-19 local declaration of emergency with a company ordinance perhaps that deals with the guard sale and the parklet.
Just to clarify, I know Mike corrected this, the employees' COVID vacation until September 30th, 2022.
Copy that.
Which, which is when it would expire anyway, yeah, so we would just line that up.
Line that up. Okay, good.
Yeah, thank you.
Good. I just want to make sure.
Okay, so that moves us on to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Construction begins this week on the west side widening of East Bedwell Street from Highway 50 to White Rock Road. The East Bedwell Street widening project adds an additional southbound vehicle lane and a bike lane. When completed, East Bedwell Street will be at its final width and traffic flow will improve along East Bedwell Street at the intersection of Alder Creek Parkway and Savannah Parkway. If you're thinking about building an accessory dwelling unit, otherwise known as an ADU on your property, the Community Development Department has an ADU design workbook that has everything you need to know to get started. And you can see examples, design financing and information about the review and approval process at folsom.ca.us/ADU. The Rolling Hills Blue Star Moms are hosting a one-day donation drive to collect items for overseas military service members. The items will be assembled and packaged at this year's Community Service Day event. Drive-through donation drives will be held from 4:00 to 7:00 PM on both August 26th and September 9th at both Folsom City Hall and at the Aquatic Center. And what they need most are single-serving instant coffee, Starbucks Via brand, protein bars, turkey and beef jerky, single-serve instant oatmeal package, toothbrushes and toothpaste travel size and AA and AAA batteries. And finally, just a reminder that thousands of volunteers will complete dozens of service projects on Community Service Day on Saturday, September 17th. So please sign up for volunteer slots at folsomcommunitieservice.org and that's all I have. Thank you.
Rosario?
Okay, I'll try to make this short. I just wanted to give some feedback from the study mission to St. Louis and Herman that took place in early July. And just some highlights from that trip were that, you know, the leading edge of economic development is travel and tourism. Economic driver engine comes back to partnerships amongst the different entities within the city. St. Louis had the second largest Mardi Gras festival and these kind of events in the arts and culture create a positive impact on tourism. They have this one thing called Movie in the Park, which benefits the community greatly. And it was interesting how I, when we returned, I saw that Art Parks and Rec had created a movie in the park, which I thought was really good. People love to hear people's entrepreneur stories and we have so many dynamic businesses. And this is something that could potentially be done through the incubator programs. Did you know that Folsom Lake College has an incubator program? I thought that was, that's something that I actually learned on this trip. St. Louis has what is called an event specification guide that could let, that lets people know when events are taking place. I oftentimes hear, oh, I didn't know that was happening or I would have attended it. And something like this can assist even businesses with staffing appropriately for when events take place in the city. We visited a kids' nature play area that was really neat, that was all about nature. Something that, you know, as a city is distinctive by nature, it would be something that would be really need to have here in Folsom. One of the big takeaways was that, you know, that it's an economic engine, it's youth sports. It is huge on tourism, hotel stays, retail, restaurants. It is something that I just came back with a very strong interest of potentially doing. And one thing that I, you know, that just seemed, as I was coming back home on that trip, was Folsom has so many great destinations for tourism. We had our homeless council a couple of weeks ago. The council has now identified a purpose and an objective with system actions and opportunities. Something that we identified were the gap analysis to prevent respond and end homelessness. Sacramento now has anywhere between 16,000 to 20,000 individuals who have emergency temporary shelter or are unhoused. And with some of these actions and strategies that are taking place, it will be something that will transform the system here in Sacramento. Election season is taking place right now and last night, Choose Folsom had a great candidate forum. There were many good questions and good luck to all the candidates. And then Friday Night Football is resumed, started last Friday, so I'm excited to attend some of the Vista Delago's and Folsom High School games. And also, if I can make a request, what is the status of the Folsom Lake Crossing Barrier? If we can get something back on, what the status is on that.
Understood, thank you.
Last one week, just visiting the schools, especially the peak cover traffic, just observing it. You know, Mike and I are going to be in a couple of weeks, sitting with them and talking to, and talked to Mr. Scott Meyer, who is, you know, very active on that one. And he expressed, you know, great satisfaction about that new hiring they did, security coordinator for entire district. So he's already, you know, boots on the ground and action. He is bringing some great things. But still, I'm doing our due diligence. Those 15 schools in our town, we want to make sure whether we can make those peak cover, traffic, and the safety better, right? That's what I'm focusing on right now. And the other one is, I think during the recess time, you know, I got an opportunity to, you know, bounce some ideas with some technology people. I think that's where Sarah Kino was mentioning last night. And I met with Micron, Mark Bahut, and Solidem, another friend. And not, I met them here and within few days, they said, YK, there is an international flash memory summit happening in Santa Clara Convention Center. All those tech companies we have, they have edge on that one. So I traveled there and that's when I saw the intelligent traffic signals are not at all working in those big cities. So, but I spent the entire day there. I think it is worth investing some time in partnership with the big firms we have. So I'll explore, you know, some more and I make a recommendation. And even Intel expressed very much interest and Solidem, the new spinoff, Express, they're all in that same footprint and their business is $72 billion per year. That's a lot. That's a lot. That's another thing I think we can think of. We already have the motherships, Intel, Micron, those ones. How do we bring high-paying, attractive jobs while the Folsom South is, you know, growing? That's one, I think, let me do some more work before I come and present to all of you as a recommendation. And again, in the meantime, I met with a very wonderful group, Friends of Lakes Natoma and Folsom. So they do a lot of work about our lakes, the both lakes here. And I asked them a curious question, have you ever visited my, our city hall? I said, no. I said, wow, you guys have been working last 20 years and trying to keep those two clean as much as possible? They said they have 500 volunteers. They work consistently to keep that one. I said, well, I'll talk to my colleagues and city managers, see whether we can give them an opportunity to come and share who they are and what they are doing, anything we can help them. 500 volunteers in that one, that's a big deal. So, and the last one, but not least one, I'm also active part on the Community Service Day. I was watching this morning, there are quite a few slots still open. Folsom residents, please, you know, peek into those and I'm sure out of those 60 or 70 projects, I'm sure you will love one of them. Sign up and see you on September 17th. With that, good evening, Folsom.
Mike?
Just one thing, I was, I was on the trip to St. Louis and echo Rosario's comments. It was, it was eye-opening and definitely was a call to action as it relates to youth sports and the things that we could do here. I attended the Friends of the Folsom Parkway meeting last week because they had, unusually for them, on their agenda, an item about Henkel Creek and the nature, the nature center up there. They're acting in concert to raise some funds and Friends of Folsom Parkway is acting as the bank, so to speak, for that, for that project. But what came out of it is a reminder that we have a really unusual jurisdictional strip along the north end of Folsom where there's about, I don't know what it is, maybe 100 yards of unincorporated Sacramento County that bounds Folsom on the north instead of the Placer County line. So there's a tiny strip of unincorporated Sac County there. And, and I know it is not going to solve every problem in the world, but I'd like to see us take a look at going through the process of perhaps annexing that little strip because there are a couple of road and trail problems that we are at the mercy of Sac County for right now that we could have solved very easily ourselves had that weird jurisdictional strip not existed.
And it could be that we already own it, just that the paperwork wasn't filed, that's happened before.
Whatever, whatever led us to this day, it is a problem for some relatively simple things that we need to do that Sac County refuses to do.
If I may, Councilmember Kozdowski, to provide you with a quick feedback, as you know, the county is very bureaucratic and not fast. We are just the opposite. And please to let you know, staff this afternoon has, I would say 75%, 80% on the scale, solved the problem. So we're moving forward.
The trail connection problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's great news.
We're pretty fast.
Nonetheless, that, that little strip, it bothers my want, my internal need for order in the world. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Sarah?
Just two quick things. Last Wednesday, I traveled to beautiful Lancaster, California with a delegation from the Air District, which I represent the city on, and some folks from RT, including Mr. Henry Lee and a couple of people from SECOG, to visit a facility called BYD. It stands for Build Your Dreams. It's actually a company that's headquartered in China, but it's on six continents, over 200,000 employees, I think they're also in the Bay Area. Anyway, they build electric buses. And so we kind of toured their factory and traveled around on bus. And then we went and visited the Antelope Valley Transportation Authority, which is the equivalent of SAC RT. They are the first zero emission, all-electric transportation authority in North America. And they made that decision to go that route in about 2016. It was a great trip until we were taking the bus from Lancaster. We were going to head toward their headquarters in Los Angeles and they were going to take us to dinner under the Burbank Airport. And it was probably 105 in Lancaster that day as it was in Folsom and the air conditioner was blowing hot air. So that was not a great, we're all, just take us to the airport. We all caught an earlier flight. And then just kind of a quick funny story. So during the council recess, my family, we traveled to Europe. We spent a few days in Venice and then we took a Greek Isles cruise. And so we were in Athens and we were going to go up to the Parthenon and we were kind of at the base of the hill. And there is, there was kind of a paved walkway that was lined with olive trees, very attractive. And my daughter, who's 21, said, that looks like the entrance to Toll Brothers at Folsom Ranch. Because she had, she had toured the models with me at Toll Brothers. So of course, I quickly snapped a picture and sent it off to Rob Aragon, who I knew would appreciate that comparison, so that's it.
That's very funny. Are they going to hang it up in their model? Have no update on what happened at RT last night, only that, that item that they were hoping that you or I would be, therefore, didn't happen. So unfortunately, missed the meeting last night because of the candidate forum that the chamber put on. Regional, Regional SAN meets tomorrow, so I will have news about that at the next meeting. And the, there's a meeting of the Southeast Connector JPA on Friday morning, so I will have news of that at the next meeting. And hopefully that meeting will be concluded in time for me to get to the fire department academy graduation. So usual warning, please, please, please slow down. The kids are back in school now. Don't block people's driveways when you're dropping your kids off. The speed limit applies to you, stop signs apply to you. And when you pull up to a red light, you have to stop, fully stop, before you make an attorney movement. Drive like your mother's following you or Chief Hillman. With that, we are adjourned at 9:23.